Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. It is the Board of Selectment Regular Meeting, Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty first, at six P M. Here at Town Hall, one oh eight, Management Street in Falls Village, Connecticut. I think we would be a little remiss if we don't look at what's happening around us. And I'm not going to get any political with this regarding how the statement I'm going to make, but I think it deserved to be said. Teacher Appreciation Week was May fifth through ninth. Many of us in here have relatives who are teachers. I think we should recognize that Teacher Appreciation Week went by. And I think we are very lucky in our town to have the teachers that we have between the Lee H Kellogg School and the Booztonic Valley Regional High School. So I think that's worth mentioning. National Nurses Week overlapped.
Holy Christ.
The National Nurses Week overlapped.
No, just there.
May sixth through twelfth. And I can tell you from personal experience over the past couple of days with my dad in the hospital, I really learned to appreciate nurses. Okay, and I would certainly be remiss based on my background to not recognize that this is National Police Week where we remember all those police officers who killed in the line of duty. That's the eleventh, uh, seventh week. So I would ask you to keep that all in the back of your mind. I mean, those weeks, they all overlap and they're all very important. So, thank you. The agenda, we have a couple additions to the agenda, and if I could give them to the other board members, these are some late breaking things that came in actually after we prepared our agenda. And I will give them all to you, and then we can vote on them as a whole. All right. I'd like to add seven N. Which is the Historic District Commission and a letter that we received from them.
Did you copy the agenda?
I do not have anymore.
I'll make some. Everybody else, I'll make some.
Seven O, uh, correspondence I received from planning and zoning regarding the reappointment of their chairman. And subsequently, I'd like to add nine D, the Historic District Commission for Discussion and Possible Action. And nine E, P and Z, uh, reappointment of the chairman to discussion impossible.
Dave, sorry, did you say the first one was seven O? Do I have that right?
Seven N, then seven O. Which is the P and Z appointment. Let's stick those two things and put them in our, our action. Uh, public comments. Anything on the?
No.
Okay, thanks very much. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, our special meeting.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our regular meeting minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty five?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are April twenty fourth special meeting minutes?
So. I do have, uh, a question on that. Uh, item two. Commence operations as soon as possible. I think it was, I thought it was, uh, we wanted them to commence operations after June first.
After June first, yes. But that seems to be as soon as possible.
As soon as possible after June, after June first.
Well taken.
Could be amended to say that.
Are you making the?
I make the motion to amend the minutes of April twenty fourth, uh, line two to say commence operation as soon as possible after June first.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And our special minutes, uh, meeting minutes from May first, twenty twenty five.
So.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. I'll take a motion to receive the March twenty twenty five Treasures Report.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And a, um, the tax collector's report from April twenty twenty five, take a motion to see though.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. I have, um, more written communications here, which I'll, I'll go over, and it'll require action at a later time. Uh, we have, uh, one of our residents asking to hunt on town property off of Johnson, uh, excuse me, off of Fashin Street. I think that we, uh, need to, uh, discuss this as selectmen. I didn't put it on the agenda tonight because I just received this, uh, the other day, uh, after the agenda was done, but I didn't add it to the agenda only because I think we should discuss it at length. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to, well, it's just a written communication, but we will look at it at a later time in the special meeting. Um, I also have a, a letter from, uh, four of our, uh, residents here, Dan Shaw, Adam Sheer, Martinez, and Kimberly Rock. Now, just read this quickly. Dear town of Canaan Board of Selectment and Recreation Commission, uh, last summer, there were several days when there were more non-residents than residents at the Falls Village Pool, as documented last summer in photographs of sign-in sheets. It was upsetting to many residents that the pool was unpleasantly crowded and loud, especially because one of the joys of the pool is its peaceful quality and the goodwill and sense of community in zones among Falls Village, excuse me, village residents. On some days, it felt as if the town was effectively running a public pool for non-taxpayers at the bargain price of five dollars per person. If non-residents are to be welcomed to our pool, then we suggest the admission fee should be raised to a minimum of fifteen dollars a person, which was what Salisbury charged non-residents to use their mountain grove last year. By raising the price, the town might earn the same money with fewer visitors who are a detriment to the taxpayers' enjoyment of the pool. Our preference, of course, would be that the pool, uh, be exclusive use for the Falls Village taxpayers and their guests. Uh, we thank you in advance for considering our suggestions, and, uh, I'm going to let the Rec Commission, uh, take this in their meeting and, uh, give us a determination of what they think, and then we'll. Um, quick email from our P and Z Chairman, Greg Marlowe, as discussed at our regular planning and zoning meeting held on, uh, April twenty fourth, this letter penned by me is forwarded to you. As a follow-up to, uh, one sent several months prior to, uh, prior concerning implementing some changes on town-owned properties within our town limits, the H Kellogg and the daycare at thirty-five page road. At the end of the meeting, the twenty-fourth, Selectman, uh, Judy informed the board, uh, during public comment that a discussion had taken place with an electrician to deal with these items, and the next morning, a discussion between myself and First Selectman Barker took place, as well as regarding, as well regarding this item. It was left that Dave would, uh, set something up with the electrician for a time to meet on the sites and inform me so that we could all meet at once and go over what could be a solution for these town-owned sites. As of this writing, I'm still waiting to hear of a meeting date. So I will wait for your reply. We appreciate your attention to this important matter regards. We're still waiting for him. Okay, but we will be working on that. And, um, this letter, uh, the Board of Finance and the Selectmen from our, uh, tax collector Rebecca, I want to bring to your attention the deadline for setting the mill rate for the July billing. There was discussion at the last meeting, suggestion that this could be postponed until mid-June, but I'd like to clarify that I want to bring to your attention the deadline for setting the mill rate for the July billing. At the last meeting, there was discussion about postponing this decision until mid-June. I should work that twice. Okay. The Cessor and I need the mill rate to be finalized no later than June seventh to ensure that bills issued are on time. If the mill rate is not set by them, I'm statutorily required to send bills at the current year's mill rate by June thirtieth, once the twenty-five, twenty-six mill rate is established. We really, we will issue an adjusted bill reflecting the balance due along with January installment. Please feel free to reach out with any questions, and thank you for your attention to this more. Those are the four that I have received. Moving on to Agenda Item seven A. Much to our dismay, at this particular point of time, uh, April third or on or about April third, we were to hear about the STEEP grant. Unfortunately, uh, they said it would be the end of the month, and that being April, that we would hear about the STEEP grants. We still have not heard, and we are at May twelfth. Something we should be aware of, uh, currently is House Bill sixty-eight thirty-one, House Bill thirty-eight sixty-one, and I'm not going to read through the entire, uh, House Bill, but the, they are looking at, uh, directing STEEP grant monies in transit-oriented communities, or better known as TOCs. So, um, I penned an email to our representatives, both Maria Horn and Stephen Harding. And, uh, this is Falls, but under, right now, Maria's purview, being a House Bill. Uh, but she was very kind to respond that she had voted against the bill last year for the very reasons that I suggested. Uh, so she will be looking at this, uh, year's version. So that's what I can tell you about STEEP grants at this point in time, because I know a lot of people are, uh, topping at the bit uh, regarding, uh, STEEP grant. But that's all I have to report. That's where we are. Item B, the Connecticut Active Transport, uh, Management, uh, Vegetation Micro Grant. We received a grant for five thousand dollars. I'm happy to report we spent four thousand of that already uh, for, uh, bicycles and bicycle equipment, uh, between, uh, the Rec Commission received a bike and some bicycle equipment, and, uh, the school received bicycles and, uh, bicycle equipment. Uh, we will be waiting on two brand-new bicycle racks to finish off that last thousand dollars, uh, from the Ulines Company. When Michelle gives me the credit card to order. Thank you, Miss Treasurer. Uh, seven C, Falls Village Daycare Center, uh, water testing, we are moving away from Water Solutions in Watertown and moving to the Warren Water Company, which has saved us some money, and I would like to thank my fellow selectmen here, uh, for their due diligence. Following that up, that was, uh, should garner some savings. Seven D, Cobble Road Bridge. Here's our update. It was inspected on April twenty-fifth.
Make it, make it clear which one.
Oh, yes, this is the bridge over the Booztonic. Excuse me, Booztonic, Collin Beck, I've got my eighty-five dollar. We have no bridge over the Booztonic. That's the Aimville Bridge. I, I can tell you where I got Booztonic. We had a long discussion this, this morning about the route to Lime Rock. So, talking about bridges over, uh, the Booztonic. Uh, right now, uh, Cobble Road Bridge, uh, we are waiting to speak with our, uh, Cardinal Construction, our engineers. It looks like there's a possibility that either the bridge will be closed. And that might be what's happening in the end. I'm not going to give the positive here or negative or the complete answer, because we don't have the complete answer at this particular moment until we speak with the engineer, but I can tell you, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, because you have been the pit bull in this one, and credit to you. Uh, I think it's the bridge they've pointed out, nine points in which it's failed.
It's, yeah, it's in pretty rough shape. I think we, we kind of know that all come, all along, but it's up to Cardinal to figure out. It's gonna be ultimately up to the town to figure out what we want to do, how we want to. I think Cardinal will give us an idea, uh, how to, uh, temporarily fix it until it can be replaced. And I'm not sure if, uh, that's the route we want to take, if they kind of fix it, and there's a limited, uh, you know, a load limit. Maybe we don't even want to do it. Maybe we're better off just loading it.
I can tell you, uh, right now, this will be available here if anyone wants to look at it. It's ninety-three pages, where I gotta put the website, uh, is of, uh, the particular study. So, um, again, we have to make some decisions here, but we need to have all our information before we make any type of decision as to what we do. Memorial Day Remembrance coming up. Oh, I might point out, excuse me, Denise, if we can go back to D. This is our, this was from two years ago, no, five years ago.
Five years ago.
Five years ago. The bridges that need replacement, as you remember, we have, we're looking at six different bridges, um, right now, to be replaced or, or repaired. Hey. And this'll, this'll call for, uh, our meeting of the Infrastructure Committee, actually, tomorrow at, at six. So we should come up with some, hopefully, some answers. Memorial Day Remembrance. Uh, parade lineup at Kellogg starts at nine thirty A M. Parade step off down Main Street at nine forty-five to the green. Let's hope it's a lot better weather than it was last year. Last year was, uh, kind of a washout, but you know what? We got through it. We even had the, the band come in through the, uh, so we made it out all right. But put that on your calendars, please.
Yes, we're looking for veterans who want to be in the parade, and I know the Rec Commission is, uh, looking for marchers and participants. And there will be an open house at the cafe. She'll have, um, refreshments available and, and community people are invited to come in sample some and bring some to share. It's gonna be a nice day.
Seven F. The NASCAR traffic plan, we'll be discussing this a little bit later on, the new business, but, uh, we had a meeting this morning at eleven thirty regarding, uh, traffic patterns for June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, uh, when they had the NASCAR Truck Series at Lime Rock. Uh, a lot of things going on. There's actually three towns involved in this, Falls Village, Canaan. Uh, Salisbury, uh, the larger portion of it, and Sharon. So again, uh, thank you, Chief Hanson, for, uh, briefing us a month or so ago regarding it, but now it's all coming to fruition, and we're just a little bit more than a month away. So we'll be discussing that traffic plan, and we will take action on whichever traffic plan this evening, because we need to get back and, uh, certainly have an answer for them, whether I should sign off as the local traffic authority or not. Um, seven G, Fire and Water Company refund. Uh, a request by the Fire Commission regarding the refund. Let me just read the letter to you, uh, signed by Dave Seeny. The Board of Fire Commissioners, uh, Fire Commission is requesting that the Aquarian Water Company refund check be out to the Fire Commission in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents be credited to the Capital Reserve account toward the purchase of a new ambulance. This Aquarian refund check is a result of an overpayment to Aquarians as they purchased the town water system. The current ambulance is due for replacement, and we need to take delivery of a new ambulance in the next three to four years. A Fire Department Committee is currently, uh, looking into, uh, options and planning for the new ambulance replacement at approximately three hundred fifty thousand, which will greatly help meet the ambulance replacement goal. Thank you for your continued support of our efforts. Keep our town healthy and safe. Signed, Dave Seeny, Chairman of the, uh, Fire Commission. Ah. Now, some boring things. Uh, Canadian DOT roadside, uh, vegetation management program. Uh, they will be starting in late April. I'm not sure if they started yet. Uh, and all the way through August thirty-first. Uh, they'll be working around the guardrails, uh, spot spraying in place, uh, places that are populated by invasive plants or invasive trees.
Do we know what that appears?
Yes. The C dot will be utilizing foam screen, Aqua Pro application units. And it's a non-recital foam containing coconut oil, wheat, grape seed oil, and potatoes. So we'll have potatoes growing along Route sixty-three.
Just don't eat it. Just don't eat it.
Please, sorry. But, but, but thank, but thank you for asking the question, because I was just gonna leave that part alone. Okay. Uh, America two fifty.
Um, not a lot to update you on. Um, we do have our summer lecture series for the Historical Society. We'll all be on that theme. And I'm still trying to get North Canaan involved. They're saying they're very limited on me, and it's odd. But, um, so we're working on that, and we're looking at, um, maybe decorating the town a little bit more with some patriotic flags and whatnot. So Canaan worked on, hopefully, by the historical.
Good, thank you. Um, and Wetlands Commission tree planting at Lee H Kellogg on April the fifth, twenty twenty-five. For those of you who attended it, I think it was, uh, uh, Wood Sinclair did a fabulous job. Mark Verdick did a fabulous job, uh, putting together the program. Actually, uh, Woods put it together. Excuse me, sorry. And, uh, Mark, uh, carried it out. Uh, Dave Moran was there from, uh, a school, FFA. It was, it was really, uh, uh, fabulous time. Um, I think what was most moving, for those of you who were there, excuse me. I think what was most moving was the tree was dedicated to our last year's Volunteer of the Year, Bill Beebe. Of course, after he put the sign up, what did they say, Tim? Water it. So, again, very, very nice ceremony.
He skipped over change. He skipped over change.
Oh, yeah. Close spending plan.
We, uh, on May fifth, we, uh, had our close spending plan. Thank you, Eileen. Think I was just choking there at the moment. Seven, seven L, National Day of Prayer, May first, on the green. Excuse me. Um, I penned a letter to Chuck and Margot Lewis, who were responsible for putting it together. Uh, I would ask, uh, the other selectmen to sign up, sign it this evening. But let me read it. Dear Margot and Chuck, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I would like to convey our sincerest appreciation for your continued coordination of and leading the services for the National Day of Prayer on Thursday, May first, twenty twenty-five. The purpose of the National Day of Prayer is to unite the nation in prayer and seek God's guidance and blessings for the country and its leaders. It is a day when Americans from various faiths and backgrounds come together to pray for our nation's future, seeking unity, peace, and strength. It's most gratifying to see over twenty-five members of our Northwest Connecticut community on town green joined with others across our country in the National Day of Prayer. We look forward to next year's observance. Thank you once again. Signed, David R. Barker, First Selectman, Judy Jacobs, Selectman, and Chris Consola. And I would ask if you would just pen your signatures this. And we will send it out, uh, tomorrow. Just looking. So we'll send that out, and, uh, like I say, there was, uh, I want to thank, uh, our D P W manager at the last minute. It creeped up on us, and you had it all, the green all cleaned up, so. It's much appreciated. So, thank you. Our day celebration was April nineteenth. Thanks to everyone who was involved. Uh, it was a great effort between the Village Gardeners, the Library, and the Rec Commission. I can tell you that if nip bottles were worth a dollar a piece, I cleaned Page Road, uh, by myself, and I have to tell you, if bottles were a dollar a piece, I could solve the nation's deficit with Page Road. I actually had a forty-gallon bag full. So that's that. Okay. Our next items that we added was, um, the Historic Commission, Historic District Commission.
Historic District.
Study Committee. Thank you. All right, and, um, the District Study Committee is asking, uh, us to approve the numbers that they will be having on. Pretty, I'll let you speak to it, because I'm starting to lose my voice again, so.
So, um, we've done a little bit reorganizing of the board. We had people want to step down and others that wanted to just be alternate, so. The Historic District Study Committee would consist of the, Cheryl Asherman, Caitlin Jenkins, Bill Beebe, and Richard Bursey, and alternates will be Scott Jack, Dan Bedel, and Frank Hassler.
Okay, so we'll be acting on that this evening. Thank you. And item seven total. Raise your hand to be recognized. Good morning, Dave. At our April twenty-fourth meeting, twenty twenty-five, it was moved forward by the Commission unanimously to renew my soon-to-expire term for the full five-year term for recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for approval. If approved, the new expiration date for my term would be five thirty-one thirty. That seems so far away. Please add this to your upcoming agenda for decision. Signed, Greg Marlowe, P and Z Chairman. We'll move to, uh, item eight. Old Business, uh, Thirty-Five Railroad Street Updates. Um, Chris, do you have anything just brief? We don't have everything yet.
We have, yeah, right. We have a lot of information there, and the wheel is still turning, so. Hopefully in our favor. It, it, it looks good. Um, and I hate to, I don't want to offer up any too much and then have things change, and so, or I'm gonna just keep it on the QT and pull, no, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Eight C, Economic Development. Jude, I'll look at you.
Um, honestly, it's been helping Liz and Howie. I've set it set up in the, uh, cafe, and they're progressing really, really well. We're crossing our fingers for the end of the month, maybe Memorial Day on, on tour to Maryelle. So we'll see how that goes.
Affordable Housing Plan Task Force, I have a couple of, uh, online seminars that I want the members to attend. Affordable Housing Plan Task Force. I have a couple of uh online seminars that I want the members to attend. That are coming up at the end of this month. C N Updates, uh the latest I have from the Connecticut Education Network. And Tim, you and I need to work on this. We gotta put a new rack in the basement for the equipment. We cleaned up a lot of that equipment. And uh so now they want a new rack and they're sending me the uh. Cobble Road, Culver and Bridge. Again, I will kind of uh. No real update until tomorrow after our infrastructure meeting and then we'll have certainly more to re- report. Move on to our tax rebates and suspensions and don't believe. Yeah, she sent that out today. But we don't, we don't have, we don't have any. The NASCAR Lime Rock. Track Truck Event. Is coming up at the end of June. Just give me a moment here to get our our plans. Do we have any NASCAR trucks? Folks.
Sometimes.
I understand the one, one beauty of it is, is uh the fact that they can race in the rain, or they will race in the rain. Let me just share this with everyone without reading everything to you, but uh. On Thursday, the twenty-sixth, there that uh four thirty, you're gonna have a parade. The parade route will go from the Salisbury uh Boys School, Route forty-four westbound, Route forty-one southbound, one twelve eastbound. White Hollow Road right into the entrance of uh of Lime Rock Park. So uh that will be. The first plan that they came up with. This would go off on the uh twenty-seven. Was traffic on uh from Route seven uh westbound. They would have shut down one twelve and make it just one way. So two lanes heading one way. And what uh actually coming one twelve from the other way would, everything would be going down to that. Four lanes of traffic, if you will. Okay, would be coming into White Hollow Road. And um what they were going to do is divert regular traffic. Non-event traffic, Sam and Kill Road, over Britain Hill, Dougway Road, Water Street, Ro Ro Street, Route one twenty-six, out to Route seven. That's the parade. No, not one first traffic plan. It's gonna be a parade, okay? Um and then on the way out, they would uh and the part that would affect us is uh. The way out it would be one twelve, the seven to one twenty-six, to Railroad Street, to Water Street, to Dougway, to Britain Hill Road. Sam and Kill back out to one twelve. I can tell you that I met today with a number of fire chiefs and I met with uh. Curtis Rand, um uh Ballon Zoo, uh regarding the plan and we didn't find it palatable. Uh that it would work. So they have produced two other plans and I would ask you to listen carefully to these plans. Because uh we will vote on Plan One, Plan Two, or Plan Three. And I will let them know. Uh the parade is going to be the same. And what we would be looking at is. On the way in from ten AM to one PM. Traffic from one twelve westbound. Okay, still would be uh. Uh it would still go on two lanes of traffic. White Hollow from one twelve, White Hollow and Cockenstown Road, which involves Sharon. Okay, and uh they would be using just part of one twenty-six. Okay, going out to Route forty-four. So again, and we're gonna kind of go past us. That was Plan Two. And Plan Three is pretty much. The same.
Kind of they get to one twenty-six.
Off the forty-four.
Yeah, the the other direction.
The other direction. They don't have it here.
So if they're going south on sixty-three, they have to go all the way to forty-four and back down seven.
Just let me just grab this again. Okay. Ah, this is the best one, three. Okay, on the way in, please listen carefully. Traffic, this is from ten AM till one PM. Traffic from Route one twelve westbound. Okay, to White Hollow Road. White Hollow Road from Route one twelve, two lanes. White Hollow Road northbound from Cockenstown Road. Two-way traffic, traffic from one twelve eastbound. Okay, that completely goes by us. This is number three. On the way out. Okay, traffic from White Hollow Road, White Hollow Road southbound towards Cockenstown, traffic Route one twelve White Hollow. Uh two-way. And one twelve White Hollow. Two, two lanes to Route seven. So we wouldn't see any of the traffic. That's Plan Number Three.
So.
There's an alternate truck route, by the way.
So where would they be diverted from?
They would come down Route seven, they would go seven right to one twelve. And they're gonna have a a trooper posted there who would then divert them to the two-way traffic. Or, excuse me, two-lane traffic going one way.
Okay, so leaving, leaving. The racetrack on the. How would they, what's the route if they wanted to go?
Forty-four east to Hartford. Forty-four east to Hartford, it would take them all the way up to Route seven. To forty-four. It's a long way around.
There we go, yeah.
It would be a long way around, one twelve through seven to forty-four.
What if they wanted to go to Goshen?
They wanted to go to Goshen, same thing. Although one so one could come up Route seven and cut across Route one twenty-six. Yeah, so bigger problem is the traffic in and out.
So really, number three doesn't affect this.
No.
What I understand is if they send them down White Hollow to Cockenstown, then what?
That they can go by the westbound wall, you know?
That's why if they just send them out through seven and down.
Yeah, so you have the state roads. Why are we using these back roads?
Well, that was, that was, that was part of the argument.
Because all the volunteers are all tied up with this event already. So you put them in those little roads, there's gonna be car accidents. They're not gonna be available to respond to them. They should stay on state roads. That's just my opinion.
Okay. I welcome all opinions. Okay. So which one? I I think number three because what this comes down to. Is the first selectman of the three towns here who are affected. Have to sign off on this as the local traffic authority. Right now with Plan Number Three, this is not reflecting anything. I don't even need to sign off on this because it doesn't affect any of our town roads. One of the questions that came up, which I'm waiting for an answer on. And uh Curtis' meeting with his folks on Friday. One of the things that we're waiting for is to see. Let's put it this way. Tim, when the state diverts traffic off Route seven, and let's say they send them down Page Road. Okay, the state is responsible. If Culver gets crushed. If, you know, something gets damaged because of the the traffic. And they bear that responsibility because they are diverting the traffic.
The the state usually only redirects traffic on state roads, so why going over town?
Because they're responsible for what happens on that town road. So again, this is where, this is where they are uh trying to find out is if they use any of these town roads. Will the state be responsible? And the answer was, no. So the question is, will the track be responsible? We're waiting for an answer back on that. But again. Right now with that last one, we are not even affected.
And it's only for from ten to one.
It's ten to one and then on the way out. Ingress ten to one and then on the way out. When the race is over. Doesn't have an exact time, but it's gonna be for just about the same amount of time.
For yeah.
Three hours. Uh excuse me. Uh it's gonna be from four to six. So we're looking for a uh. Plan one, two, or three? One is out. One was the original one.
That, that's crazy. I would make a motion for number three. It makes the most sense, no.
Second. So I will report back to our next meeting that we'll be looking at number three. Okay, Aquarian Water Company refund. My, just my thoughts on it and and what happens and please uh treasure. If you want to chime in at any time and and tell me if I miss misspeak. But. That needs to go back, that check needs to go back in the general fund. Correct? I am former treasurer. Okay, it needs to go back in the general fund. But that's money, if my understanding is correct, that money is a refund from Aquarian. For us overpaying or not even pay, we shouldn't have been paying for those fire hurricanes. So. Again, I'll look at, A C is from the commission and for calling everyone out here, I apologize. That money was already allocated to the Fire Commission.
We we paid basically for the hydrants or the founding.
So that twenty-six thousand dollars in essence. And I don't want to say, I'm just gonna do the air quotes, belongs to. Fire Commission, that money has been paid out already. Okay, from the Fire Commission that came out of their budget. Oh, correct? Okay. So. Their wish. Is to. Put it in the non, a non recurring capital funds for ambulance.
Go ahead.
Okay. That's how you would allocate it. All right. Dave, couldn't you speak to that just a little bit if I'm not putting you on the spot?
Well, we're looking to replace the Ableton the next few years. And it cost a four hundred, close four hundred thousand dollars. I think right now we have like the.
I can tell you.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
We have a hundred and fifty, hold on, let me find that note. Tom. Oh yeah, sorry, we're in two different places. We. Well, we currently have. Sorry, I was looking up. Oh, here it is. We currently have a hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and one cent in the EMS savings account. Which we've been holding to because we knew we were gonna buy a new ambulance. In addition to that, in currently in the um. Reoccurring account for the current reserve from the town, there's fifty-three thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. So we're.
A round total of?
For a round total of a uh hundred and two hundred and three thousand dollars approximately. Um that is important to add to that this year, which I know you proposed twenty thousand. So it would, if we, if that money was allowed to go to the reoccurring, to the reserve. It would give us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards what we anticipate will be a four hundred thousand dollar ambulance. We expect to try to order something by the end of this year. Um so we know that we also have some fundraising um ahead of us. We. Are looking at, what'd you say, two, two and a half years for delivery. So.
That I know from some personal experience.
Well, the the vendors we've been speaking to, it was three and four years. It's down to about two and a half right now. So we'll have to see how that, how that goes. So we'll have a little time to come up with the, with. Additional funds, but we will be doing a lot of fundraising on top of that.
Is any of that for operating expenses or is that?
No, we also have money in a um checking account that we've been using for operations.
So. This is what we're faced with. Okay, I know that quite frankly, the money can go to a number of places when, if it goes to the general fund. I know we have a lot of projects here in town. I know there's a lot going on. Uh it will be obviously uh the Board of Finance will be again talking about. Uh finances and where we're gonna go to both spending plan. I'm only going to make one statement here and and I'm just going to open it up to the other two selectmen. Uh the way I look at it is uh this is money that is the town money. But it has been already allocated to the Fire Commission, who's paid over the last several years. So it came out of their budget. My. Personal opinion is that. That money should. Be able to be earmarked to go in something that the Fire Commission would be putting their money into, which is. The ambulance. My biggest concern about the ambulance, okay, and again, I'm speaking from an emergency response perspective. Is that if we lose the ambulance. I do know that um several towns have looked at, if you will, contract services. And I do know for a a larger town. One in particular, I I know all they talk about one point seven, yeah, it was one point seven million. The staff, um one point seven million dollars with equipment and personnel. And a staffing service and and so on and so forth. I just think that it would be, it would behoove us. To let that money go. Was the money that that was already allocated, let it go back to the Fire Commission, to the ambulance.
Andrea, there is a time limit how long you can have an ambulance ready to go.
The state, the state likes us to um, with replacing our ambulance um after ten years. When was two thousand thirteen?
Um fourteen.
Fourteen, so our current ambulance is um two thousand and fourteen. Uh they will, we have to have by annual um inspections. And the inspector will be inquiring as to what our plan is for replacement. When they come to that inspection probably in October or November. So uh we would. You know, we would be more comfortable saying that we had, that we had a plan. Our last ambulance, we did buy secondhand. So we were able to, was it uh New York was just banning their ambulance? And so we were able to purchase it from them at a much lower price. Um which was, you know, really worked out for us and it bought us a a few years because our other ambulance we had for a really long time. And uh the state really was on us, looking at us to replace that ambulance. So um and but this one's starting to have some, you know, the door didn't work the other day, you know, the sliding door. There's, you know, it's requiring more and more maintenance, you know, um and then it goes out of service, which isn't helpful. Um we have to wait for getting parts, it's become a huge problem. Uh we all know the supply chain issues um that we're having around emergency services.
Uh, we all know the supply chain issues um that we're having around emergency services. Um, so uh equipment, so those are things that we're encountering now. So it is, before it really breaks down, it's time to, to replace it.
Well, I have to say personally, I have seen underneath that ambulance, when it's been up on the left. It's time to replace it.
Yeah, I guess uh. It's no question. I mean, I understand it completely, uh the urgency. I think the town is faced with. Uh, some other issues as well, where the twenty-six thousand, or at least a portion of it. Would also be well spent. There's uh. I, I uh. The, the fact that the twenty-six thousand. Came back to the town from Aquarian isn't a result of. The fire commission doing, you know, some great work or, you know, you know what I mean? They didn't save that. Crane overbuild us and and we didn't know that going in. It's not like uh, you know, you guys did uh. An awesome job saving that money and now that, you know, at the end of the year, there's. Uh, a big savings here. I understand that.
But they. He's who realized that we were, that we were charging for something. Um, and then pursued it to get the money back to the town. And I do, I understand what you're saying that it, you know, it wasn't. You know, it wasn't like we underspent and so the money came back to the town. So I, I do understand that. But I also understand, and I think there's many worthy causes in this town. Certainly, you know, but I also think the, we're required to have an ambulance service in this community. Uh, by having us volunteer, you are saving a million dollars a year, I can tell you that for a fact. And it's something that will serve every single person in this community. Irregardless of. Politics, whether you're friends with the people, not friends with the people, like you dial nine one one, that ambulance is gonna show up. And it doesn't matter how big the emergency is or how little the emergency is, it's gonna be there. And there are very few things in this town. The fire department, the library, the recommission, that serve every person in this community.
I get that, I understand that. And I'm not. Doubting that or, or arguing uh against that. One thing that I'm looking at. Is there a three residence on Cabo Road that uh gets that big bridge is closed or limited? Will those three residents or those three houses get. Uh unrestricted um access? Uh, which would include fire apparatus or oil uh deliveries. Uh, in order to uh. In order to make sure that they aren't um imposed on. We have to spend a lot of money on Cabo Road. And, and there's no, we have no capital reserve for that. There's nothing. That's gotta come out of the general fund or we're gonna borrow tomorrow to do that. There are other places too, but we won't. I just, I'm, I'm worried about uh earmarking this money. For the ambulance and and again, I'm not against the ambulance and I understand the, the uh, how important it is. We have to stay on track to get it in three years. But uh, there are other. Uh, financial requirements that I think that are more in more. Uh, near term that we have to come for, and that's all I'm saying. Then it's up to, I mean. That's only my opinion. It's up to the town. If the town wants to buy an ambulance and bond the money for Cabo Road or or whatever, then. I think we're gonna bond it anyways, regardless. That's right. I think so. And again, I'm not, you know, everybody in this room knows that I live on Cabo Road and knows uh how I feel about it and uh. The, with the, the issue that we're faced with right now. We can take all that out, cause I really don't care. I can get onto Undermounting Road without any problem. It's the other three houses that are up there that deserve the same. You know, access to their properties as I have or you have or anybody else in this room has. So. That's, that's all. Well. Whatever we do is going to be a recommendation to the Board of Finance. And again, with respect to the time and what we have tonight. I would, I would put forth a motion. Uh, as I said before, to take that money, put it to the general fund. And um. Make a recommendation to the Board of Finance. That those monies be put in the ambulance fund. Through the fire commission, Linda?
I say something.
Please.
Realize that this twenty-six thousand, no matter where, it, it has to go into the general fund.
Correct.
It has to.
Yes.
Your recommendation to the Board of Finance would need one way or the other, but just stay in the general fund before it goes to the ambulance reserve. Board of Finances has to take it to town meeting.
Correct.
At that point.
Correct.
So, I mean, it just.
To take it back out of the general fund. Can't earmark it to something else. Correct. It's in the general fund, that's fine.
Meeting, but both whether. Uh, it goes into the ambulance reserve. The Board of Finances does not at this point in time have the authority to.
No, they can't. Right, right.
But can they put it in as options for at the town meeting? For it to go into.
That however. Because it become a board of finance issue. It's however they put it forward to the town meeting.
So they, they.
Well, I would assume that they would be making, putting an item on it, you know, there's this twenty-six thousand dollar. And. The fire commission would like it in this selection, if that's what you choose, uh we'd like it to go into the reserve. So now it's, the townspeople that gets a vote, whether it goes into the reserve or the military user. Prior to the vote. Guys, it's all say your piece about. Should comply, whatever, whatever, but.
Alright, motion.
What prevents the fire commission from uh? From asking for a twenty-six thousand dollar. One-time increase in the non-recurring capital accounts. Out of the general fund. It's the same thing. Doesn't have to go to town, town vote. I think.
Too much money, but.
You're gonna put it, you're gonna put it in the general fund and out of the general fund. It's still in the town meeting either way, not as a, not as a, uh, not as a full item. It would go through the budget. Through the budget. As it's still wide to go as it's still wider.
The, the thing is, the Board of Finance has asked for a fifty thousand dollar cut from yours spending plan. So it's not likely that they're going to add twenty-six thousand dollars even if we request it out.
I, I think, I think where we are as a board is just making a recommendation, okay? For letting the Board of Finance know that uh we either. Want that money. To go, what we is obviously going to go back to the general fund, but going to the general fund. And then have it brought up for town vote. As to whether or not that money should go back to the fire commissions to the capital reserve. Or the ambulance.
That's true.
So that would be my motion.
And I second that.
I'm sorry, you're recommending to the Board of Finance to. Utilize the twenty-six thousand dollar refund from Aquarian to be put into the ambulance reserves, then, you know, the first of.
Well, we'll go. Don't have to put that in there, okay, but that, that, then the funds go to that twenty-six thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Whatever uh goes to the fire commission to.
Not to the fire.
Fire commission, I'm sorry, goes to the, the, the capital reserve for the ambulance.
And you made that motion?
I made that motion, Judy seconded it. All in favor? I oppose. All right. Again, with respect to the time, uh, because I know that the Board of Finance has a lot to get through this evening. I will make some motion. That the Town of Canaan Historic District Study Committee include the following members. On their committee, Judy Jacobs, Cheryl Eichelsman, I always. Caitlin Jenkins, Bill Beebe, and Richard Verzine. Alternates would be Scott Jack, Anne Bado, and Frank Hatson. Second. All in favor? Oppose, no one.
Is there a term or angel effect? Cause a lot of these people are already on there.
No, there's no terms according to the state. But there has to be five regular members and three alternate.
So the people who are on the committee right now, what do we do with them?
These are the people. There was some that resigned. So uh Richard Verzine has replaced.
Okay.
Okay, and our last item of business that we need to uh. Vote on receiving is nineteen. Planning and zoning. Identify yourself, Richard in. Uh, planning and zoning, uh Greg Marlowe for a full five-year term until five thirty-one thirty. And that does seem like an awful long time away. Uh, I will make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Just for discussion, Bridge Infrastructure Committee, we're having a meeting tomorrow. We're uh Solar Project Committee, nothing new on that. Uh, I don't have any other business. Come before us tonight, uh public comments.
Any other business, one thing?
Yes.
Uh, Cyril Renner and Matt Nobel, Metal, Level. Seventy-five Main Street, about the tree up there. Did we ever get anywhere with those?
Tim went up and looked at the tree. Do we have? Okay.
It's special.
It's scheduled to be, they're scheduled to be.
Looked at.
Deadwooded or whatever. They know that?
I sent them back an email.
Okay.
That Tim was gonna go up and assess it.
Okay, that's it, that's all I had.
Uh, CC.
Would you say deadwooded?
I'm, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, I didn't.
I apologize.
I hadn't, I know they sent emails on it, we just wanted to hear.
Any public comment?
I mean, from Charlotte Cabo Road. I'm on the, the possible grant group and um I am aware of grants for uh emergency services. So if you guys are interested, I do more than that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we love it. I mean, we did just get a grant, that's Michelle to apply for. Come on, outfit the whole to her back, so um, and we're always interested. There's usually very few grants for. Uh apparatus. So that's. Okay, you know. So that always becomes a challenge, um and they generally, I mean, we always, we generally apply to the um. Grant for um. The Ford Spider Grant, and so um we apply for that annually, but um. Brick and mortars can be tough and apparatus can be tough. Okay, but we certainly interested, yeah. Have you ever sent anything my way?
I, I, I mean, I will take a look.
Any other public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, does it? Or over my, but.
Vincent Victorielers. I've been here twenty-five years. Every year I hear the same thing, you know, we have no money. Got six bridges. We've got roads falling apart. It's like a, it's like having a home. And you've got good credit. But you don't get the home equity law. To fix these things and every year it gets worse.
Correct.
But I haven't fixed Music Mountain where I live. Since I got the property, I put three sewers in and we paid for it along my road there. I'm looking at the budget numbers. And I'm bringing up the, the board of finance. And I don't see any big increase in money. And everybody knows how much more everything costs now. How much more time it takes. I mean, I'm gonna be eighty years old. What am I gonna do? Wake up ninety-five and they repaved the road in front of the town? I think there needs to be more creative, maybe, maybe the board of selectmen have to lead. Let's just hand it over to the board of finding its own length. And there's gotta be more communication between people. For the important things, how can we have six bridges? That need work. We've heard this every year.
We narrowed it down to six. Well, this new board of selectmen is hoping to take care of this.
As you look at this and then I, I, I hear you, okay? Uh, I think uh the comment was made by one of the members. For the finance, probably more so than we have in a number of years. We've put more money in infrastructure.
No, we really, even I, I do, we wanna. Such as, in fact, this, what I'm saying, I'm gonna look at it a little bit more creatively, to look out, to maybe take care of things now. And we pay a little bit, even when you're talking about an ambulance, you don't have to have. Oh, four hundred thousand dollars to buy it right away. So we pay, we just have to structure things differently, or it's gonna take years to get out.
And that's why I'm going to look over at, at the chair and say, that's why we're talking about.
We hate it.
A capital plan.
We know we may have to buy a car with that. There's nothing wrong with that.
We're not, we're not. A town that's starting, but we're riding away to the way it is due.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Going once, going twice, going two times. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
All right, good evening. I'm gonna call the Board of Finance for a good meeting for May twelfth to order. We do have to see Pearl, um I heard from Steve and he asked, we see.
Oh, and it seems like Carol's not gonna make it.
I'm here.
I'm gonna, I make a motion to seat uh Carl for students.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Cyril. I'm here. Um, we're gonna see Pearl for. Receive right now. Oh, yes, I, 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 fine. Okay. And Roxanne is. Um, public comment. Good.
It's been shared with my producer that there was discussing regarding lowering the proposed budget lines and CDO planner and attorneys. Twenty-five agents, this could be inside your board last year. It's very disarming to learn that the planning is only commission with one of the most proactive committees being a panel. Well, having health budgetary issues that were the town days last fiscal year. So they're doing a lowering this line. Consultant engineer planner line by ten thousand. And as one of your only members, Rice, you shared the last meeting seemingly unnecessarily so at the end of the day. She felt that we as a good team player made the best of what we were given. We're also a very transparent commission. It's every one of our meetings is shared here, assumed for any townspeople. That they like to see the actual work from the company to their home. I can assure you that they will be in for an extra pack, two hour hard work minimum per meeting. Please join us. Discussion was had at our January meeting as we perform a task to together propose spending. Plan during this year for the drive, so we said. And consensus of the commission was to again be a great team player, fiscal responsibility of behalf of town. Know the ask for that of what we moved from last year in budget. So you know as a forward-thinking commission that there's a hot, a very high potential for fifty upcoming year for the DNC. And you have known progress and applications that are in the pipeline. Knowing of these while also being aware that we can't ever be sure what is waiting around the corner for us. Makes this a very difficult number to pin down as a known quantity. But we believe our number to be a conservative, safe ones. We are beyond fortunate to have professional to work with when looking at our current key deals. Not only for our commission, but for the whole town as well, with what she brings for knowledge and his strength to protect us from error decisions and practices. We as a commission are working very diligently to fix many errors in our regulations and practices of your advice. This work is crucial to stay within the guidelines of what our field CD. This work is crucial to stay within the guidelines of what our P L C D has laid out for us. It's critical areas of figures that's decided by our town's vision into the next decade. With this being said, to cut what we envision, we may very well need for this line item is out of line. This can be seen within your very own supposed budget. Like your professional services have increased by approximately ten percent in the last three years. With our proposed budget numbers over that same period, we have actually decreased hours by seven and a half percent. Times have changed so considerably much in planning and zoning, and the never-ending logistics nature of woke. Is that we need to do all that we can to protect our town finances and keep the professional that we have and be thankful that we have. Please be mindful that even though this proposed line item is increasing, our bill cost per hour. Work is remaining the same, which I view as a gift, really. As mentioned at your last meeting, we've been placing that roughly three percent a year over. We could easily argue that it's also reducing the bill cost that it has not risen. We, as every board of commission and shore within town, will do our best to do as much as possible to leave them out of money. As far as the talk about removal of attorney line items, I believe this could be as short sighted as it was to remove last. For both P and Z and the board of selectmen. Your board decided it was an error, at least for the board of selectmen, and reinstated a certain amount of it. But for the P and Z, we never asked anything to be back into that line in case moving. She still has. Uh, to be, you want to be a great team player in these special issues. Because continuing to not fund this line for the most exposed commission in town is sending a very bad message to our members. The blanket reply that you can always return to our board if you end up needing it. That can be played out for every proposed line in the budget, which would be, of which would not be a very transparent exercise for our taxpayers. As far as the discussion of the non-recurring capital reserve account, it's section ten twenty-eight. At twenty-five hundred dollars, it's for the rewrite of the plan of compensation development required by this. Ten years. I think there was some confusion there with the rewrite of the regulations. It's for the plan of conservation development. If you give a look at the description, I believe that's. Please try to come to the upcoming meeting held by our subcommittee of the P O T V. To see the incredible work being done to achieve the goal and immediate work by all and set out our, our latest plan. I assure you that you'll be. In summary, I ask that you put forth our voting public for well thought out proposed budget for fiscal years, twenty-five, twenty-six. That are sending us only commission being to our board of selectmen to fully discuss and present to your board. They made no changes, no under numbers were followed. The seven thousand dollars that I have discussed here placed to about a forty percent of the year full budget. If needed, I believe there are many other areas of the budget where you can find this extremely small percentage, especially instead of. The ones of such a valuable return on investment. Great Marla, Chairman of Planning and Zoning.
When's your, when's your next P O C D meeting? Uh, the subcommittee meeting, yes, when you, May twenty-eighth at six o'clock at the senior side.
There's a lot of. Pitch at Gossby Talk around town, so I just wanted to point something out. This port of finance was presented with expected revenue of five point nine. And expected expenses of six point four. And they have been asked, they are responsible for filling almost a five hundred thousand dollar gap. That's what has been placed on them. And they're doing their best. They're trying to figure out how to do it without putting a huge mill rate increases, increase on the taxpayers. Cause although there's a lot of us who can afford a one or one point two or one point three or two mill rate increase. There's a lot of people who live in this town who cannot. So rather than talk so poorly after port of finance. Maybe we can support them and work together as a team with the boards and the commissions and the board of selectmen. To come up with a solution to this five hundred thousand dollar gap they're trying to fill. That's all.
Stephen Koshland, Music Mountain, and also vice chair of the planning and zoning commission. I did wanna sort of tag on to what Greg said, and let you explain that we are two full commissions. We are a planning commission and we are a zoning commission. So if you think that our budget is over. We're actually half of what we essentially are. We're two boards, so we're actually saving you money. Even though it looks like we're spending more money. Um, and I also wanted to state that our town planner is used by other boards and commissions in our town. Um, the selectmen have used it, the historical society, other commissions have used it as well. But yet it comes out of our line item because she is the town planner and is hired by the board of planning and zoning. So part of the expenses is also other boards and commissions. So I, I thought that that should be understood by the board of finance as well. Um, and we did combine line items of the Z E O and the consulting. Because we also felt that it was really hard for employee to decide what fifteen minutes are here. And what twenty minutes are there and what thirty minutes are there. And, and that gives much more transparency to our billing process, which I thought was much better for our, our town as well. So that's why we made those changes and those decisions. We also came in front of your board and answered all your questions, and there was no concern about any of our increases. Or anything that we were stating at that meeting. Um, so we feel that we addressed all our concerns and all your needs for what we were desired with the budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also on the void. That's Greg and Steven. I wanna endorse what they both said. I want you to pay attention to that line item for leader. Cause we have got the most exposure. And we've got no money.
Thank you. Anything else? And for everyone? We'll move on to, is there agenda amendments?
They made a recommendation to the board of finance. They meeting.
So we're gonna add. See if I can. This was the, one of the last, and we, the recommendation from the board of selectmen was to.
Recommend to the board of finance to. Twenty-six steps.
So be nine, eight.
Into the ambu- recommended to town meeting. To go into the ambulance reserve, and Michelle will give me the number. And it's twenty-six have changed, but some of that. Is that nine, me?
Any other additions to these? Okay, communications. And we have the letter from fire commission, which will share with everyone. And. I'll read it in three minutes, just to. So to the Town of Canaan Board Select and Board of Finance from the Town of Canaan Board of Fire Commissions. Board of Fire Commission is requesting that the Aquarian Water Company refund check made out to the fire commission. In the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred, twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Be credited to the capital reserve account for the purchase of a new ambulance. This aquarium refund check is the result of an overpayment to aquariums since they purchased the town water system. Current ambulance is due for replacement, and we need to take delivery of a new ambulance in the next three to four years. Fire Department Committee is currently looking at options and planning for the ambulance replacement at approximately three hundred fifty thousand. This will greatly help meet the ambulance replacement goal. Thank you for your continued support of our efforts to keep our town healthy and safe. Respectfully, Town of Canaan Board of Fire Commission, Dave C. Chair. Then I also, yes, I received a email today. From the tax collector. I'm gonna put that into, and that was a good afternoon. It would be. Second is our communication. I want to, good afternoon, Board of Finance and Selectmen. I want to bring to your attention the deadline for setting the mill rate for the July billing. There's discussion at the last meeting suggesting that this could be postponed until mid-June, but I'd like to clarify. Okay, yeah, clarify the necessary timeouts.
I had the same problem.
The accessory, and I need the mill rate to be finalized no later than June seventh to ensure that bills are issued on time. If the mill rate is not set by then, I am statutorily required to send the bills at the current year's mill rate by June thirtieth. Once the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six mill rate is established, we will issue an adjusted bill reflecting the balance due. Along with the January installment amount. Please feel free to reach out with any questions and thank you for your attention to this matter respectfully. Last thing, um, so did receive, Michelle, you sent that to everyone, right?
I guess.
Um, she sent a, her job duties for emergency management director. Do I, should I read through them or is that? Um, thank you. It was very helpful for me, for anybody else. So it was a good summary of the, um, we had a question at the last meeting about the duties. So she did summarize that. It says, take a moment, take a look. Is there any other communications? Let's move on to the secretary's report. We have April twenty-third. The first one.
I'm making motion to. Accept, approve the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? April twenty, meeting minutes.
We'll make a motion to approve the April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes.
Is there seconds? Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Chairman's report. So. Just as a. Preface, um. You can run it, a cloud through here. Michelle, you said to me that it was, you alluded it, but you also looked for the reserve accounts. We split them. On the val- on the balance sheet. So, um. A fiduciary versus a reserves was extremely helpful as I looked at it. Thank you. So she has included.
I had a question. Um, for, uh, the P and L, July through March.
Yes.
Um, our state revenue is one ninety-three, eight fifteen. Um, when do we, uh, is that other hundred thousand roughly? Um, when do we expect to get that?
You never know, I just get the positive automatically. There, go. You mean the other state revenue or?
Yes, sir. No, just, just that, that line, that other.
We already got some.
Speech from now, from March and going out.
Yeah, we do. So then if you in the revenue report present, it shows you what revenue has been brought in. As of May seventh, you'll get another one this month's day.
Okey dokey, thanks.
Uh, the motion to receive. I'll make a motion to receive the treasurer's report. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Do we have to do the port of financing or anything?
One or two. We don't. Good, I'm just gonna have to discuss on your reconciliations.
Um, so my, my register of values to the registers I've gotten from Cindy. I gotta shout to her as to why the P and L are different than her.
So you're awaiting follow-up from? The board. On to the tax collectors.
If you say we don't have to do anything with the reconciliation.
No, shoot. So. We should do, we'll send the, uh, tax collectors. Uh, I make I so move. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, Tom, was that you?
All is in favor?
On the board of Ed. Make a motion to accept the board of Ed's report, day-to-day, the thirty, twenty twenty-five. Received, received, I guess.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Selectmen's report.
Well, in the interest of time, I'll just hit some of the highlights here, okay? The Steve Grant update, uh, we thought we would hear on or around April third. Then we thought we would hear at the end of the month. I assumed the month was going to be April. Uh, we heard nothing. We still have not heard anything. Just wanted to call to everyone's attention, House Bill sixty-eight thirty-one. Uh, where they are looking, uh, to prioritize those towns, towns with. Uh, as they put the, uh, traffic. Uh, let me, let me use the proper acronym here. Okay, the transit oriented development towns. Okay, they are going to prioritize the monies, uh, in this, uh, bill.
What's a trans oriented town?
Well, one that's.
Oh, one that does not have like a center of public. So they're not prioritizing us.
They're not prioritizing us, which, uh, then I sent a, a letter to our representatives and, uh, again. Uh, this is in the house. I sent it to, uh, Maria Horn. She answered back and said, uh, she voted against it the last time. And that she would, uh, be looking at the bill once again. And, uh, more than likely, uh, she told me how she was gonna vote, but. Uh, when you look at the towns we have here in the northwest corner and the sixty-fourth district, uh. I think I can count on one hand, maybe on two fingers, the transit oriented towns. So it, it would have an effect on us. But again, we have not heard anything regarding Steve Grant.
And it hasn't gone to Senate at all.
So in the house right now. And I know that they're in session tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, correct? I believe that she just sent something out. Yes.
Is that for Steve Grant for, that's been bonded for this fiscal year or for the twenty twenty-seven secret?
That's the one bonded for this year.
They want to change the purpose now after the applications are in?
Oh, no, he's talking about the state H B for bill.
Yeah, but it's a house, house, house bill, so I have, I also applied with a copy, but yes. They wanted to go to, they want to prioritize. This has been a bill, uh. Uh, if you remember going back for the last couple of years, it appears every year. And, uh, when we met with the cog, uh, a while back. Uh, our legislative liaison, uh, from Harlith and Mike Cris gave us a rundown. And they actually thought this bill was dead in the house. It has come back. So again.
Is you, is Steve Grant not USDA?
And this is why, again, we're. Read you everything we had, was supposed to be on or about April third, then it was supposed to be the end of April. We are now at May twelfth. The one just has to ask what might be going on, and I don't have. The insight what's going on in order with the Steve Grants. But I do know this. Okay, uh, Connecticut DOT Act, and again, I'm gonna move right along, Sheriff. In interest of what you have going on tonight, uh, the DOT Act of Transportation Micro Grant. Received five thousand dollars, we've spent, uh, almost four thousand dollars of that. Uh, with bicycles and bicycle safety equipment and some pedestrian equipment, which I should have mentioned at the last meeting. Uh, we still have, uh, to buy two bike racks for the school. Again, uh, this is on a, on, on a rotating basis, this comes up. We've been fortunate to get the last two grants that they have offered, trust me when I tell you we'll put in for a third one. Under the rec commission, I think the rec commission now is sharing. Some of what, what we receive, so we'll be looking for that. The Falls Village Daycare, uh, Center, uh, Water Testing, uh, we're moving to the Warren Water Company away from Water Solutions, it should save us some money. On an annual basis. Um, the Cobble Road Bridge, I M D. Uh, we have, uh, received from DOT. That the bridge is in less than suitable condition, there's nine points where it is. Uh, we could have probable failure. We are meeting with the Infrastructure Committee and Cardinal Engineering. Uh, regarding it to see if there's any repairs that we could do that would be. Uh, at least fiscally responsible. Or, uh, what we may have to do. The culverts, which is, uh, a project that we've had on the back burner, we may have to move that up quicker, but. Again, I'll have a little bit more, uh, information for you once we meet. And discuss with the Infrastructure Committee and, uh, Cardinal. Memorial Day remembers. Come on down, okay, uh, on the twenty sixth. Uh, NASCAR Lime Rock, twenty sixth and twenty seventh, uh, traffic plan discussion, we had a meeting. Today of all parties involved, all towns involved. Uh, I am the local traffic authority here in town as the first selectman. And, uh, met with, uh, the other selectmen who are affected, Chris Rand. Uh, in particular, uh, who's affected the most by this, and we discussed it with the track and with the state police and, um. They gave us two alternate plans, uh, not to go in to those plans, but we ended up, uh, picking Plan Number Three, which. Kind of eliminates. Falls Village as a whole, other than traveling on Route seven. So. They had planned for the traffic to come down one twenty six, down Brewster Road. Over, and, you know. It was over the, over the bridge, Amesville Bridge to Doug Way. Over Britten Hill, Sam and Chill, and it just. I can look at the emergency service personnel here and say, it, it just was not enough, it was a nonstarter. So I'm not going to get into that. That whole discussion, I apologize, but. Uh, the aquarium, uh, refund. Which we've already, you will be discussing. Uh. Vegetation Management Program, America Two Fifty, we're getting, uh, ready for that, that we gave our, uh. Post spending plan. Uh. On May fifth, uh, those of you who had a chance to attend, really, really nice tree planting up at the, uh, school. At, uh. Uh, Lee H. Kellogg. It, uh, is a, uh. Jefferson. Which is a national tree, by the way, because it was planted in the thirties, so this is somehow related to that tree, I'm not quite sure, but. By, by being a Jefferson elm. Uh, it's, it. Doesn't, uh, it's not affected by the Dutch elm disease, but I think the, the, the greatest part of it was that. Uh, it was dedicated to Bill Beatty. Which was just, I, I thought fabulous, and I didn't know it until that day. Um, Mark Burdick. Uh, was the MC, uh, Wood Sinclair did a great job, and Dave Moran brought up his, uh, FFA class. So again, maybe I'm spending a little too much time on that, but it was a really great ceremony. Um, National Day of Prayer we had on May first, we were doing a letter to Chuck and Margot Lewis for putting it together. Uh, for those of you who, uh, celebrated Earth Day with us, uh, on April nineteenth, I can tell you that, uh. I could. How did I put it? I could. Really, uh. If we were paid a dollar for each nip bottle that I found on Page Road. I could solve our, our nation's insolvency. Okay, I filled a forty pound, excuse me, forty gallon garbage guy. So again, uh, I'm looking over at Emily Peterson, she was, uh, part of the group that was honchoing it and. I think she saw me come back with the bag, she thought I was Santa Claus with the green bag. Uh, the Historic Commission, we, uh, appointed, uh, Historic Study. Uh, Committee. Uh, we appointed the members to that and, uh, looked back over in the corner, identify yourself, the. Uh, now chairman and, uh, chairman until five thirty one. Twenty thirty, which seems like a long time away, uh, Greg Marlowe. So that's, that's what we have.
Thank you. Alright. Into old business. We're, we'll table the policies and capital plan with no. Let's go to education spending place. Um. I know. Pat is here to talk to us a little bit and we've worked on the Board of Ed. So if that's all right, then no, just have Pat tell us. Is that where she's at?
I think everybody got a virtual copy from budget. Ginger, I think last month, state one, Thursday, I just passed. Did you, you need one too? Uh, at, at the meeting. But we, we represented, you had asked us to, uh, reduce our most by ten thousand dollars, we have gone now. So, uh, some of the narratives are a little bit different than they were originally. And so through. The, um, information at the beginning. Of the, uh, the beginning of the budget in terms of anything that's in yellow. That's important information, but it has been changed to reflect that. Technology budget is also, um. Secretary, um, when that has been not a primary field. So. You asked us to re- reduce by ten thousand dollars, we've, uh, we've done that. I will tell you though, that, um. Uh, we did not find out until last week that one of our aides. Is, um, he has another job. And will be leaving us. And, um, we'll have to find a new aide. The, the figure on this may be, just so that you know. Um. This aide was leaving, did not take the health insurance. Because her husband has to help with shows, so. You know, we, we are going to select the best person. And that might mean. They may be healthy shows. Now, I, I do think. And I think I can speak a little bit to the Board of Select, to. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, I think, oh, they have a pretty tight budget. And, um. We don't, we, as we go through the fiscal year, we look for savings as we go through. Um, I understand there was some talk about the new, um. About the Newton Fund that we have. From last year, where we're allowed to take two percent of any, uh, any, uh, under, under your budget that we didn't spend. I will tell you that we are reserving that money because. I know the section of the roof on the school needs to be replaced, if you recall. We're doing it section by section. Last year, we did the section over the primary wing and the office in that hallway. Um, next. Time we do it is gonna be, well, as you stand. And look at the school this way. It is gonna be way on the other, it's on the other side of the driveway. So that's, uh, that is. That's not touchable as far as we're concerned, because we, we hope that we will have. At least a portion of whatever, you know, that's gonna cost, and we can't. Let it go too long, we, you know, maybe is a big help, he was, as you know, was there at the school forever today and Chad. And they will be looking at that move this summer to, to see how we should be planning. Uh, for next year, but that is one capital project. That might be coming along. Otherwise, I don't think, you know, we reduce as you ask, so I think we'll get.
Pat, can you give us a sense of the, the surplus you had left over? How much of that do you think you'll spend on the capital improvement on the roof?
We'll, we can only take two percent of any unexpended costs.
You know, but the, right, but you, you did have, I think it was about thirty thousand dollars in that non lapsing account, because it was money that was budgeted.
You're talking about the accounts that we already have? Okay, there's about nine thousand dollars in one account. Okay, and that would be for the building improvements. And we have another, uh, nonrecurring capital account of technology. Uh, which has over thirty thousand dollars. And we'll see how we do on the technology, the technology obviously is very important, uh, for the school. And, um, hopefully we won't have to come back to you. Um, we may have to come back to you. To do what you did for the fire commission, um, and a fall town meeting. Or a certain amount of money, hopefully we won't have to do that. We do have that backup plan for the technology, which is money that has been reserved. For that very purpose.
You're talking about.
Non recurring capital, and I'm, I'm breaking the count, well, Michelle can tell me.
But the other, the other twenty nine, 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 nine. That was the end of.
Four, I think.
Sorry about that new account.
The new account. That can't be used for that. Yes, it can.
Well.
Not according to the town, not according to the state, well, uh, the superintendent did check. On this, and I am told that it can be used for that purpose.
I, I spoke to CCM and they, they concur with that.
Thank, I mean, that's a break for, yeah, that's a break for us.
But I, I, I'm still a little confused, um. The statute was changed and it allowed you to keep a so-called non-lapsing account. People, not excessive two percent of your budget.
No, two percent of. Uh, two percent of what was not expended.
No, it's. You have to keep what you didn't spend. Up to a limit of two percent of your budget.
No, we don't get to keep the rest of that. We can, we can, whatever is unexpended, we could take two percent of that and put it in that county.
I don't think that's the way it works.
Yes, it is.
So you're saying if they didn't expend, in this fiscal year, if you don't expend. Ten thousand dollars. We can, then you can, you, you, you can't keep all ten thousand, but you could keep two percent of that. And put it wherever you want.
In a separate account, yes.
I, I would encourage you to revisit that, I'm, I'm quite sure that's not what the statute says, it allows you to keep. As I read it, and I think it's pretty clear, it allows you to keep. Everything you didn't spend up to a cap. Of two percent of your budget.
Does not exceed two percent of the total budget appropriation for education. For such prior fiscal year.
But if you, if you think about it, they'd be giving you just a smidgen.
Whatever we have left is unexpended funds, so we take two percent of that. And, and that's the way it works, we don't keep the whole.
Well, maybe, maybe you didn't, but you're permitted by law to keep up to two percent of your budget.
No, okay, I'll double check, the superintendent, I checked with her, and she said it was two percent of the unexpended amount.
Yeah.
And the other things I'd like to point out to you, just as, just a little bit more information, perhaps, would be helpful to you. Um, we have tuition students that. Pay to go to our school, and I'd like you to know that tuition. It is paid, goes directly into the general fund, we never, we never see that. Uh, so, that is, this year, that's gonna be around sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars or so. Uh, I, Michelle, so. We have, yeah, I, that, that, I'm almost positive that is between fourteen and sixteen thousand dollars, we never see any of that, and that.
Does, to support your.
Yeah.
Budget, I mean.
To support our budget, the other thing I would like to also indicate to you is that. Well, uh, I can tell you, uh. Without hesitation, the Sam Herrick, the Business Manager for Region One, does a great job also. And they can also keep the four. Percent. And they credit us. For. They credit us for whatever. We, uh, our share is not spent. So there, and almost every year, Sam manages somehow, I'm not quite sure how. He manages somehow to have some money given back, so when you take a look at that, my guess is that. Uh, because of our strong fiscal management. We are, uh, we are returning money to the, uh, the town coffers.
In two ways.
And two, at, at least in those two ways, yes.
And that, that.
Yeah, and of course, you never, with, with personnel, you, you never know. This business person, she knows. Uh, it, it's sometimes it's tough. To do that, but our, our goal still is to get the best person for the job. And hopefully we won't have to come back to you, uh. To ask for requests for money, but I did want to let you know, again, it's at least one thing that has come up in the last. The last week or so.
I think it's gonna be crucial to our discussion. That we have a clear understanding of. The town's reserves that it sets up for you. And the non lapse account that you're allowed to set up for yourself to this two percent cap, so. Do we know how much is in the?
Yeah, it's still on our balance sheet, and it needs to be on our balance.
Well, that's, you know about that, but.
But what is the amount that is in the non lapsing account?
There, we have two, now, we have two in our recurring capital accounts. One is for the building, and that's got about nine, a little over nine thousand dollars in it. And the other one is for the technology, and that has like one, two, twenty nine, and thirty thousand dollars in.
So roughly speaking, in the neighborhood of forty thousand dollars.
Except that we have to use it for those purposes.
Wait, so you had these, these two, the, there is talking about the town reserve.
Yep.
Pat, are you talking about the reserves that towns? Shift gears from that and go to the, the non lapsing account that the. School Board has for itself.
Yes.
Do you know how much is in that?
Um, I think there's about thirty thousand dollars in that.
Okay, okay, and that's what I agree with you and CCM conferred, that. You can spend that for. Anything, it's, the, the statute says education purposes, but I said. How about technology, how about capital improvements, and he said, as long as it's for the school.
Yeah.
You're free to spend. Right, so, um, it's not just for pencils and teachers, um. Okay, so, so there's these two pools of money, the thirty thousand dollars. In the non lapsing accounts that you folks have, then the roughly forty thousand dollars. That the town holds in reserves that it's.
Right, but remember, thirty thousand dollars or so that we have. In the account that we control, we are putting it aside because we know we have to do another section of, of the roof. So we want, what we're trying to do is make it more, uh, make it more fiscally responsible. For the Board of Education, so the town does not have to pay so much. Um, the last section of roof that we did was about eighty five thousand, between eighty five and ninety five thousand dollars. I would say that this next section we look at is probably gonna be the same, we did that roof a couple of years ago. I'm sure, I'm sure the price has increased, but, you know, it. If you have a leak, you gotta fix it, and you can't keep patching it, you have to do it.
So the, the expectation is that that will be funded. By both the town's reserve accounts and.
No, no, uh, no, well, not, you could take the nine thousand dollars out, because that's for the building.
Right.
But the other reserve account that we control, we mean either Board of Education.
Right.
We would take the money out of that to help defray the, whatever the cost was.
Which if you have the same expenditure next time, was only gonna cover about half the cost.
Probably, but at least it's, it's half the full cost.
Okay.
You know, it's half the cost of saving through.
Okay.
And, um, you know, as I, as I said, both, uh, both, uh, Regional Public Services. And special education. Um, over there, and us here. We don't stop trying to save money, just because the budget is finally passed. We're always looking for savings for something as, as the year goes up. May I ask you any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Thanks.
Other thoughts? Budget.
I do, I have some other thoughts. Um, I know that, um. That, uh, last year, we had thought we were gonna, we based our decision based on.
That, uh, last year, we had thought we were gonna, we based our decision based on. The, the project, very, very, very conservative projected revenue. And, uh, and it ended up that we. Had more revenue, um, to go back into the general fund than we had thought and, uh. Same thing happened the year before and, um, I, um, I'm just, I'm just thinking that. Once again, we're thinking very conservatively under six, eleven, eight, eighty-two for state and local revenue. Um. Uh. And so I'm, I'm just thinking that if, if. If, if, uh, the past trend proves consistent, um. That's going to end up higher than six, eleven, eight, eighty-two and we're going to be in the same place we were last year and. Potentially approving a mill rate and then having a, a bigger general fund than we thought. It was, that's just one thought that I had. And the other thought that I had was. Um, I, I would. I, I applaud to the, the Board of Education for. Finding another ten thousand dollars. I thought their budget was really solid. Um, and, you know, I also really applaud the, the, the. Town spending plan and that one, it wasn't at the full meeting, I'm so sorry, last time, last Monday. But that one had us, us, what they, they. Reduced it by ten thousand, was it?
Almost eleven.
Almost eleven. And that did not touch P and Z, which was discussed it, yeah. And, you know, I think that's, um, that's where they landed. And so my other thought to share is. As much as we would like to do, uh, really get. On top of our capital reserves. You know, maybe we don't get on top of them as much as we wish we could. Um, so I'm trying to find that page on, on the budget for the capital reserve accounts, uh, allocations. Um, but, let's see. Thanks a lot. Yeah, that's so, um, non-recurring capital. So, you know, I know last year, we just really didn't do justice to these accounts at all. And this year we want to do a lot better, um, but maybe we can't do. As much as we'd like to do. So can we find, you know, the other forty? In a little bit of shaving here and there, not drastic in any one area, but. You know, it's just, the, so those are my two thoughts. I'd really love to. See if we can come to a, you know, some, some ideas that are not so scary.
Well, I think what, I'll, I'll repeat what I said the last couple of meetings, which is that. We can do, we can do trimming here and there. But we're still going to have this, this imbalance of revenue and expense, um. I understand that, you know, doing no trimming, no additional trimming could mean a larger mill rate increase. Um, I think between the, the items I spoke of last time, which is. Potential not to use this for all of the steep grant allocation. And some of the appropriation from last year that's still pen, that's still light. That does increase the general fund to a point where I think we can make some of that up. Uh, and not increase the mill rate that high, but by trimming some of these non-recurring capital counts. We're in a position now, we're spiraling and we'll never be able to put money back into them if we keep cutting it. So we have to figure out, and again, this is not a. This is necessarily a question for today or a, or a problem solved today. But collectively as a town and all organizations, I'm thinking the selectmen, the finance, P and C, P O C D. We have to find ways to increase revenue in this town. Um, otherwise, this is the same exercise next year. We'll do it again and we'll. It will be, we'll be cutting, we'll be asking people for very, uh, impractical or, or sometimes impossible solutions to cut it. Um, I'm not in favor of cutting, uh, capital accounts. We did that last year. Um, I understand why people would want to. I don't think we do because we do, we set that precedence again two years in a row. I, I don't think we ever, we ever recover from that, so. Um. I think we're gonna, like Amy said, I think we're gonna have some additional money. And we may have to take more from the general fund. That's just another tourniquet and we have to find revenue. And I don't know how we do that, but I think collectively, everybody, every organization in this town has to come together and figure that out.
Let, let me ask both of you, what makes you think we're going to have more revenue than is being projected?
Okay, um, uh, well, history is one. Um, um, the second thing is, and maybe Michelle can help me with this one. So for this budget, is the education cost sharing final? That number that was in there, that one thousand, one, one hundred and eleven thousand? That's drastically lower and it, it might be.
No, you should have allocated.
This is the one that came to me today.
I'm on the new sheet we got.
So that one.
Yes.
State as one of our numbers.
And that's normally.
Is a, um, a scale, what it could be, and I took the look.
See, and that's, that's where I'm coming from. If you wanted to know, John, is that we are very conservative in our income projections. And I'm not saying that next year's going to follow. Our trend of, of, of not ending up at the conservative base. I'm, because hey, times change, but I think it's, you know, it's very. Why isn't you to be project, projecting very conservatively? But that's where we end up, um, in a conundrum. Wow, we raised the mill rate and we've got over a million dollars in the general fund. Because we are very conservative. So that's one area. Then the other area is other town revenue. You know, we've been at, um, you know, the fifty thousand range. And now we're jumping down to thirty-five. That's probably because you're being very conservative, right, Michelle?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
She's being very conservative. And then there are some other things that are very conservative, conveyance tax.
Share, you were, that was at thirty-eight. So that's why I put it up to thirty-five. I should have put it down. We might get more, we might get less. I can't subject it.
Right, yeah, okay, so, okay. So, you know, I just, that's, that's where I was coming from on that, you know, I, I don't know. You know, how valid it is. Then there's always that weird thing of prior taxes. And interest in liens, you know, that, that come in. And, uh, you know, it's, it's where we, we just, um, it's very hard to budget for those, these unknowns. Very, very hard.
Can I say something about that? Um, Rebecca and I were talking about prior year taxes or interest in liens. Historically, up until last year. Uh, the town had budgeted a hundred percent current property tax revenue taken in. And not put anything to budget for the prior years or interest. That's what we've done in the past. Last year, it was, it was, um, ninety-nine point three percent, I believe, was projected for current property tax. And there was also nothing in prior year interest. So. If we're going to not project a hundred percent in current property, I think we have to project something in prior year interest.
And given that, and I would base our projections on taxes on a hundred percent because.
We are already, if you take the numbers, um. And you put all of the taxes together, we are already over a hundred percent collected at this point.
Right. Right. But at the very least for current, for, for the current taxes, if we. I, I do believe that is why the previous Board of Finance groups have always calculated a hundred percent. Because they knew that we might collect ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent and that we would also collect some prior year taxes. So I, I hope that answered your question, Ben.
It does somewhat. Wasn't there a, a foreclosure sale that bumped our, our revenue was?
Not.
The last year, right, and that happens.
Fiscal year, there was a penalty on Forest Land by.
And foreclosure sales are very rare, but, but rare. We haven't done it for many, many years.
Right. Right, um, and I don't remember it even being part of a factor of previous years when I've been on the Board of Finance either. Um, but I do remember that, you know. We took a conservative line on, on revenue, uh, but, you know, we, we, we also didn't have that twelve point five percent. Of the budget.
Well, if you, just to put high level of arithmetic on this. Michelle's projecting about nine, twelve. In the fund at the end of the year. And if we stick with the twelve and a half percent. Um, floor.
Right.
Twelve and a half percent of the budget, if they do the arithmetic. Um, we wouldn't be able to take the general fund down below eight hundred.
Right, that's what I have.
Eight hundred thousand, so.
And that's with no cuts, yeah.
Um.
Well, that's all, about all for all of them, you're right.
Yeah, so it's, so it's a hundred and twelve, um, yeah, you could take a hundred and twelve, um, so if you.
John, just.
Yeah.
Action into using the whole hundred and sixty-six thousand that was projected for this year.
Right.
That is, and we're not looking at using that for.
Right, there'll be money for you to, sure.
Right, um.
So from nine fifty to eight hundred, that's a hundred and fifty.
Well, is, does your nine, twelve figure give credit to the general fund? For that portion of the general fund appropriation that we're not going to need?
It does not. It's what is over collected in certain lines, so it. That projection, you know, in the revenue at the bottom, you can see what we've sold to years in the past.
Yeah, this is what I was saying about last, last week, because that hundred thousand between that number and that number.
Right.
I'm not with you, John. I'm trying to stay with you on this. You said nine, twelve?
Nine, nine, twelve is the number on.
Cause I have nine.
With this one that just came with.
One of the shelters there, so, um, so maybe it's more than nine, twelve because we. In gaming out the arithmetic should add to that nine, twelve. The portion of the one fifty that we will not end up using, which I think on the basis of current numbers is. Eighty-five thousand dollars, something like that.
amended one sixty-six, so.
So. Well, I'm, I'm not going to try to do the arithmetic in my head, but the nine, twelve might be meaningfully greater than. The, the general fund might be meaningfully greater than the nine, twelve. Um.
Well, I think it's, it says nine, nine, twelve also includes taking one hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Right.
Right, right. So if we don't get the steep grant, we know we have.
Another hundred and twenty-five.
Five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So I don't know what's going to come to pass, um, in the next six weeks, but if you, if you just go on the basis, subject to all of. The uncertainty that might surround them, if you just go on the basics of what's been projected.
I think we are trying.
Um, yeah. If we do have nine, twelve in the general fund and we don't want to drop it below twelve and a half percent. Then we can only use a hundred and twelve thousand dollars of the general fund. For budget relief next year. So if the hole we're starting out with. And we could disagree on whether we should use a hundred percent or ninety-nine point three percent. But using ninety-nine point three percent, the hole we're starting off with, off with is, is. Four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
You're gonna use the ninety-nine point three, I think you have to project something in prior year.
You might, you, you might.
Yeah, do something.
Um, the hundred percent leaves a hole of four hundred and thirty-two thousand.
And that's if you use the nine, twelve. For the general fund.
It doesn't have anything.
It doesn't have anything to do with it, but, but that is also keeping that in mind.
Right, so we're going to have a hole to fill based on the projections. Depending on whether you budget a hundred percent or ninety-nine point three percent of somewhere between four hundred and thirty and four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So maybe it'll end up being a lot rosier because we end up getting money that we didn't expect to, or maybe. More, more bad news than good. Maybe we don't get the steep grant, but just staying with the projections, so people have a, a scale for the arithmetic. If, if the deficit, and I'm going to use the ninety-nine point three because I just scrolled out the numbers, um. Uh, if the deficit is four seventy and you can only use. A hundred and twelve from the general fund, that leaves a deficit of three hundred and fifty-eight to make up and that's one and a half mils. One and a half mils. And. What we're doing, I think tonight, is against the backdrop of possibly. Because we have to set the tax rate next, next week or in a couple of weeks. We, we don't have the luxury of. Waiting several months to find out what happens. Um, what we're about tonight, I think, is do we want to. Save that one and a half mil increase. By forty thousand dollars, which would be the equivalent of another mil and a half or point one five mil. It's, it's not a lot of money, it's forty thousand dollars, but when you're thinking that you might have to tell taxpayers. That their mill rate is going to go up by one and a half. You, I think, to make the town confident that we're making everybody buckle up a little tighter, you try to cut expenses. So you can tell from some of the comments that have already been made that. And I don't mean this as a criticism because I don't think anybody's put forth a lavish budget. But everybody thinks their budget is, is tight and can't be cut. Um, so I'm not a strong advocate of this, Greg, but I'm, I'll just say to you, the first thing I, I mentioned, I thought. Your budget for the planner line is it's a twenty-five percent increase. That's a big increase. So. For me to say that's okay, and I, I can't, I've got to put that all on taxpayers, I have to be persuaded. That you really need that twenty-five percent increase. And same thing with the attorney's fees. Somebody made the point, we're, the P and Z is the most exposed. Well, if you're sued, the two thousand dollars is barely going to get you to the courthouse step, so. I guess what would help me to hear, and we're now getting into specific areas, but we have to start somewhere. What expenses do you anticipate incurring? To account for basically moving the CE or the Z E L planner line from twenty-four thousand. To thirty thousand, that's the twenty-five percent increase. So what's, what's the big press you're anticipating?
Might figure any.
Well, I'd like you to, um.
Um, honestly, it's just the, the workload, the anticipated workload of. Thoughts that have either pre-applied or we think are coming about the things, it's just however, still a little. And, you know, five thousand dollars, you just don't know, right? And I'd rather be. Go, you know, we spent a lot of time when this was commissioned to try to come up with his own, you know, remember we went down ten thousand dollars. Last year, we make, we'll make it work. Can we do it again this year? And, and that's equal level to last year? You can, but knowing that you have more of a workload, we might still be close. It's, it's, it's not. Helpful and we don't think it's transparent. Knowing that we'll have more to do, we think, we believe, right? And ha, not having more money to cover it is, I think, for planning.
You, when we look at our. Um, our, how we're spending, how the town departments are spending. As, as Pat said, and as I've also experienced from previous years. We have a pretty thrifty, uh, town, we have a pretty thrifty border bed and we more often than not. End up saving money and we don't end up spending what we protect. And it's not, it's not that they don't need it. Like that legal, uh, that legal line. That money is an investment so that you don't have to spend buckets and buckets of legal, uh, court costs, of course. Because you're getting, uh, uh, very, um, relevant legal advice at the time when you need it. So you don't make a faux pas, uh, or a legal mess. Uh, that, that's just an example. So my, my feeling is, I know that you're looking only at the numbers that we have in front of us. But I think that we have to consider that. It's not going to look like this on June thirtieth. No, man, I know it's hard to project, but we have a thrifty town. Um, I, I don't think. Some of these projections, the conservative projections are going to be that dire, um. You know, I I hate to say it, but uh and I don't think, you know, I wish we knew more about the steep grant, but the way things are going now, I just don't know if we, well, we 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 committed to that when we when we bought the grant. So I think it's it's probably wise to keep that in mind, but who knows when we'll hear. I just, I just, I I it's very hard to approach this in such a conservative fashion, and I understand what Tom said earlier, is that, you know, we can't keep working this way, but I have been assured by the first selectmen and the other selectmen, and somewhat by our board chairs, actually. There is hope for the future that we are going to be approaching things in a very different way come next year. When there's a capital plan and we can be looking not just at one year, but multiple years and working more collaboratively. Uh, it's what I was hoping for last year, but I understand that there was groundwork to do, like the capital plan. I just, uh, it it pains me to um be so strict about it. You know, and 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 I'm I'm not sure that that's uh that's kosher or fair or what some people would say is good business, I you know, I I tend to leave a little bit of elbow room in in the way I I've approached businesses with uh a little bit more hope than than uh than fear. Maybe it's not realistic these days, but it's a habit.
What do you think, Carl?
Joe. And I think everything we're talking about is nice, but the problem is we have a revenue problem in this town. That where is the new generated revenue gonna come from, I mean? It just, as a businessman, I know I can't spend more than I string in, and um we either have to raise revenue, which is no rate increase, because we're not gonna draw businesses in that are gonna pop up out of nowhere. Um, or we have to cut spending, I mean, that's.
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, I I don't, I and either way, it's difficult, it's a difficult pill to swallow.
Right, but all of it is based on the position you have to take, which is are our projections going to be very strict about what we know now, or are they going to be based on?
Well, but as a business person, from my side, I have to be strict, I can't just say that, you know, the next project I'm gonna make up for my shortfall.
Right.
Um, yeah, it's a sticky wicked, I it it's very frustrating, it's very frustrating, and as a taxpayer, it's very frustrating, and as a business owner, it's very frustrating. Because you're seeing, and like we talked about the steep grants, in um part of my business where I've been associated with, we've used grants for cemetery restoration. The word on the street is that a lot of those projects are on hold because the state is
Yes.
Pulling back because they're concerned about what the federal government's gonna do.
Right, and they're giving now priority to trans something.
Trans or you.
Trans.
But even beyond any of that, I mean, we we can't hold, we can't hold our breath to say that the state's gonna do the right thing. So we have to basically figure that that's not gonna happen, if it does happen, wonderful, but um.
Right.
Yeah, it's a it's a hard one to swallow, in our case, if the secret hasn't come through, then that just hits a hundred and twenty five thousand for us to play with.
Right, the question about that, um, the right, the twenty five thousand, uh, two hundred, two hundred, one hundred and twenty five thousand. Um, was this year's allocation, uh, to match the steep grant, right, or was it the total?
Total.
Go.
Well, one or no, no.
The total allocation was almost two fifty, part of it came from the reserves.
Right.
So that's.
One twenty five is from the general fund.
So it's approximately half of what we, but do we have to allocate all of that hundred and twenty five this year towards a steep grant that will be a multi-year thing? Could we allocate, you know, fifty thousand this year and fifty thousand next year and twenty five thousand the following year?
And on the project, you wanna get it done in two years if you can.
Okay, so maybe.
Four, but you wanna get it done.
So maybe cut it in half, so it's not seven, twenty, hundred and twenty five thousand, maybe it's seventy five thousand this year and fifty thousand next year.
You can't touch it, though.
Yes.
That whole one twenty five is.
Been out.
You can't.
It's a condition of the grant, yeah.
And you have to, and you have to allocate it all in one year?
It's, yes, you can't say I'm gonna use it to fix the bridge this year and hope I get some more to put in the account next year, you can't.
It's it's a reimbursement grant.
Yes.
Spend the money first.
Yes.
Right, but do we have to spend all a hundred and twenty five thousand this year is my question?
You have to lock it up.
Yeah.
So that you can't spend it on other stuff.
That's how you get the grant.
Yes, I know, I understand, I just.
The other question, the other part of that, which is interesting, is that is this town gonna have the money to pay that upfront? To do that work before they get reimbursed, I mean, it's, I'm not talking about the stuff that's already part of like the salt shed, that's already baked in, I'm talking about
The secret.
The open stuff on the from the general fund, I mean, we're in a position now, we have limited revenue and a lot of expense, so we're gonna add more expense to some. And I said this the day we voted, I'm all for making the town better and making it nicer with more amenities for our our citizens, but if we can't afford things, we can't afford things either, so we have to pay attention to that, so that's our, that's us doing what we should we should be doing, is thinking about that, so.
How do people feel about the chance that we will, you know, go ahead and pass a a mill rate increase and then come July, find that oh, we got a over a million dollars again in the general fund, right, like we were last year? And it's on the taxpayers' backs, I mean, how do people feel?
They're a lot closer this year, I I'm having much more confidence for all that what has been projected is.
Still very.
There were two large components that contributed contributed to the three hundred last year. There's nothing on the horizon to make us think that's gonna be reproduced, so, excuse me, um. We have, if we're gonna put this all on taxpayers, based on the projections we have and making the assumption that we will get the steep grant, we are looking at one and a half mils, and since we applied for the steep grant, um. Until we're told we're not gonna get it, we need to think about that money as tied up, um, the the thing about this that that I find difficult is um, we are overspending our revenue by somewhere between four and five hundred thousand dollars, we've got our general fund very close to the level that we shouldn't take it any lower, um, and when we hit that point, then we will have significant tax increases, significant ones, um. We're looking at one and a half this year, next year, if you do the arithmetic, it's likely gonna be over two. And there's no end in sight to that, so forty thousand dollars out of the town's budget seem to me, despite all the points I've heard people make defending their programs, seemed like a pretty easy lift, if we don't get ourselves to the view that we can give up some of what we thought we need, then this problem is nothing, vast unmanageable. So I'm not gonna try to cram cuts down anybody's throat, but um, the attitude has to change.
Well, speaking of cuts, do you, I mean, how do people feel about shaving a little bit off of the non-recurring capital counts, so that we can.
Which line?
Well, it would be, I mean, I haven't, I I have to confess, I'm not not really like an expert in these areas, but you know, we.
Amy, before we get into that, I'm only gonna ask, because I know Roxanne has a question, so I wanna have her, let her ask her question. Um, and then we're gonna come back to what you have first.
Thank you, thank you, um, my question relates actually to the point that Amy's trying to make, which is the non-recurring capital account um amounts we have in our budget. I um am wondering if to Vincent in Coglio's point during the um.
You're going in and out, you're going in and out, try again.
Um, I'm wondering if we are not thinking, can you hear me? If if not.
Not there you go.
Not hearing me at all?
I can hear you very well.
Our internet connection is unstable.
Can I talk? Can I type my question, or can you hear me?
Try it, Roxanne, go ahead and talk.
Why are we not assuming we can do more creative municipal bond financing for all of these capital expenses? Instead of continually dipping into what is essentially an operating budget for the cash for these large capital expenses? I think I'm new to this, but I don't understand why we continue to set aside money for capital expenses that can be easily financed with debt, um, and in the future when it's needed. Because that is an avenue available to us, and in the state of Connecticut, the only other town that doesn't have debt financing besides us is Greenwich. Because they can afford it, and and I really do think we don't look, as Vincent suggested in the Board of Selectmen meeting, we don't look enough to future future to uh financing opportunities that are available to us because we are a municipality. And so I do wonder if you look at that line, that's a, says we're setting aside, you know, to over two hundred thousand dollars um, for reserves for making capital purchases, I just think that's a huge line when there are creative ways of financing um those kinds of expenditures that we don't take advantage of as a town. So that's my question and my point, and I guess my support of Amy's suggestion that if we absolutely need to shave forty grand, we shave some off of all of those lines. Um, because they're not expenditures we face this year, and there are more creative ways of paying for them.
I agree. I'm not, I'm not opposed. Roxentus is, this is John Stein, I'm not opposed to that, but just just a couple of things to keep in mind, we do have debt on the books right now. Um, it's not a huge amount, but we do have some, um. Even thirty thousand?
Yes.
It's one and a half million dollars, uh, it's it's not so tiny, um, and it's only for a couple of projects, and so these capital projects come up, we are gonna have to borrow. We we all recognize that what's in the reserve is nowhere near what's going to be needed to execute the project. Basically, it's collateral, so that when a lender approaches us, we we don't look destitute. Um, maybe you can get a better interest rate, so, I mean, the non-recurring capital accounts serve a legitimate and useful purpose. I'm not opposed to trimming the contribution a bit this year, um, but the idea that that we don't need them, I I think
Um, I wasn't saying we don't need them, I just think the amounts for some of them may be excessive. I mean, they they increase, for example, in the truck reserve, um, is a is a big lift.
Um, I don't think, I don't think they're excessive, but I do think they're more than we can manage this year. Just, uh, you know, just for perspective, I I know we have work to do to build our reserves, but I'm in agreement with you, I just wouldn't use the word excessive.
Okay, I agree.
Um, so, yeah, so I I think that there are, you know, maybe we can't do as much in but we maybe instead of for, you can be truck equipment, don't throw any rocks at me, Tim. Um, but instead of uh thirty, instead of going, we instead of going from uh twenty four, twenty five, eight thousand five hundred to thirty five thousand, maybe we go to twenty thousand. And for truck reserve, instead of going from thirty six thousand to sixty thousand, maybe we go to forty five thousand. Um, and then maybe we take thousand dollars off here and there, and five, you know, and we get to another other forty thousand. Um.
Hey, can you remind me, if we have to borrow money for large purchases after the town voted?
Yes.
Yeah.
So run, you also run the risk of that being rejected, right? I'm I'm just throwing devils out there.
Yeah, absolutely, but that I don't think that's a reflection on on on. I I would say that with the information we got today about the ambulance, I wouldn't touch that one, is that's clearly something, you know, that um we're we're needing, you know, it's very soon.
And it also, five thousand, not twenty thousand.
Right, right, it wasn't a big jump, so, um, you know, I think we could find the forty we can get needs to to help us get to where we, the cuts that we were hoping for um, in the town budget.
It just becomes like last year, it becomes a place where we constantly cut every year.
Yeah, nothing's gonna, yes, but we're not cutting as much, we're still doing better than we did last year.
Yeah, we trimmed everything fifteen percent.
Yeah, but we're still doing better than we did last year, and um, and again, I don't think anything's gonna change until we take a different M O completely. And until then, I just don't, I don't wanna penalize everybody for it.
The one thing, I'm I'm sorry, the one thing that uh, don't ever lose sight of this. A lot of the monies that we find in the non-recurring capital accounts, we have been able to utilize for some of the things that that we hadn't, there there is a reality here that, okay, uh, a new new fire truck would cost us how much?
So much.
You know, a million, a million dollars, we'll never have a million dollars in that account.
No.
But if we needed a study done on uh as we have uh for bridge maintenance, repair reserve, we were able to take money out of that.
Right.
In order to do it, so, um, I would, I would be very, very cautious about, and I I know where you're coming from, Amy. But I would be very, very cautious again with the non-recurring capital accounts, because it is money to offset a lot of these things, we know we have a lot of work coming up, uh, this whole hubble road bridge and culvert is is certainly.
Badly needed, yeah.
Is badly needed, and we're going to have to go to the plan about that, um. And we we kind of cut ourselves short in in the past few years during COVID. We didn't put anything into the accounts, okay, we cut fifteen percent, so where you see seventeen.
Yeah. Yeah, we were starting backwards, yeah.
Went backwards and and tried to, so, uh, again, I hear what everyone is saying, but I I would be a a little cautious with with those, there might be some shaving we could do, but um, again, I I think about environmental cleanup, we were able to use some of that money uh, to help us out the a few things, so. I don't wanna rob those accounts, and I mean, these are small ticket items sometimes of of where we take money, but we have the money there.
Right.
Yeah, and you can also collateralize loans with this.
Correct, as as was pointed out, so, again, you just just have to be somewhat.
Creative.
Creative.
Yep.
I was gonna use the word careful.
Yeah, I don't think creativity has a hell of a lot to do with it, um, well, look, the the sixty thousand dollars we asked um, the town to pitch in fifty, Board of Ed to pitch in ten, it was arrived at somewhat arbitrarily. So if we could get sixty thousand dollars, it would lower the burden on taxpayers, and we just divided it up between the town and and the Board of Ed. Five for you guys, one for the Board of Ed. We would survive if we didn't make any cuts to the budget, but the the point I will make, and then and then I won't make it again, is that every subject that has come up tonight in which we might shave it, has been resisted by the affected parties, that attitude has got to change, or the finances of this town are gonna get very precarious. So future boards of finance are not gonna be able to be as patient with you. So I don't think that any of the cuts that we had in mind would have impaired life for the agencies in this town much at all. They seem to disagree with me, I I I don't, I'm not persuaded, um. But it's not a tremendous amount of money in the first place, forty thousand dollars, um, so just to move the ball along, if there's not a great ground swell of interest in shaving expenses, let's just get done with this and put it all on the taxpayers, but get ready for a RACUS town hearing. And there won't be without justification.
So we as a board need to make a decision tonight, we need to something on the table, what we wanna do, we either moving forward as presented, or we're gonna meet again.
Well, I'd like to wrap this up tonight, because we're not gonna be any more informed a week from now, and by the way, I do wanna I'm not gonna say correct the record, but the statute says if you don't get the bills out by July one, whenever you do get them out, you have thirty days to collect, they they don't push back until January one of the following year, the ability to collect any increases. So I'm not sure where Rebecca got that point, but I wanna wrap this up tonight anyway, because I don't think we're we're gonna learn anything by waiting.
Rebecca must push it back, she meant that she would send it, it would be an additional bill.
Correct.
When the military was set.
Right, but but we couldn't, we couldn't impose it until January.
That's what it read.
And what the statute says is if you get the bill out, say, July fifteen.
That's what she said.
You you can collect on August fifteen, you don't have to wait to collect the increase until January.
Yeah, that I think was what she was trying to say.
Okay, but it's it's it in my view, it's irrelevant because we've gotta wrap this up.
Yeah.
Well, ultimately, it's a town, the towns' vote.
Towns' vote.
Right, but they're gonna, they're gonna be looking to us for for a recommendation. So the recommendation will either be, will accept the budgets as revised by the town and by the Board of Education. Or right now, we're gonna impose a few spending cuts that we haven't before. And yeah, no matter what we propose to put up for a spending cut, there's gonna be resistance. It just is.
So we need a, you're recommending that we have a motion, did you wanna make a motion?
No, I don't think we're ready to make a motion, I think I think the people around this table, we've talked about, I I, the reason I ask Pat so many questions. Is that a week ago, um what made perfect common sense to me is that. If through good management, good fortune, et cetera, the town got to accumulate, the Board of Ed got to accumulate thirty thousand dollars. Because it underspent its budget, then why, and that was when we contribute to reserves for technology. And for capital improvements to the extent of twenty-five thousand five hundred a year, why not suspend that this year? Because they've got th- the thirty thousand dollars surplus they already have. Pat informs us tonight, and I'm sure she's right, that's booked. That's for the roof, um so that makes it. Wise to contributing to the reserve. Um so you could make arguments on both sides of that, I do not think this budgeting for legal expenses, and I'm a lawyer. And I've I was a litigator, I do not think it makes any sense, um the arguments I've I've heard put forth. First of all, we never spend the money, we budgeted every year, we never spend it. Um and the little bits that we do budget are are a drop in the bucket. Um those are expenses I think that you deal with when they arise, so I I think legal fees is a is a ripe area. To to make cuts, um it'd be maybe eight, nine thousand dollars there. If we don't think that we should take anything away from Kellogg's Reserve, that's gone. The other big thing we talked about, Greg obviously is vociferously opposed to it. Um is is the planning and zoning budget, and I can't say what he's saying is wrong. But it's a twenty-five percent increase in the planner line, I we can say yes to that, but it's a twenty-five percent increase. If everybody here asks for a twenty-five percent increase for everything, we'd be in much more serious conditions, so.
And then the last area is in the cap.
In the capital accounts, right. So why don't we just tick them off? Um. Who who would be in favor of making some serious stance in the in the in the legal expense line?
In in what I didn't.
And in the legal expense line.
I don't think they're significant enough, so I'm not.
Okay, so. There's three.
Sure. Yes, I would be.
Okay, so.
Let's just fill together what make them do enough and probably.
Well, let's just tuck that away and maybe we'll make the motion. So there's twelve thousand five hundred, just so everybody's got the arithmetic, and legal expenses already budgeted, if we left. The Board of Selectmen with, and again. This isn't an empty promise, if they need the money, we'll we'll appropriate it for them. But I don't wanna budget for it, if we don't know for sure, we're gonna, or reasonably sure that we're gonna need it, so if we left the thousand dollars. Um for the selectmen and cut the rest of it, you. They they already proposed cutting two thousand dollars of litigation expense, so we would. Um let's see, twelve thousand five hundred, they had it cut to ten thousand five hundred. We we could cut nine thousand five hundred right there. And leave the selectmen with a thousand dollars of legal expense, no litigation expense and no uh legal expense line for planning.
I might have the wrong one, I'm trying to keep track. They cut that to twenty-five hundred, so the.
Yeah.
Do you have, you don't have the.
Yeah, they already cut it to twenty-five.
What was the total number you were cutting, total?
Forty-five hundred.
So John, you don't have the.
Yeah, no, I understand, I would, I was going from the in the initial, which was between. The selectmen and P N Z, they had twelve thousand five hundred, they cut. In the first revision, two thousand of that, so that that expenditure is now down to ten thousand five.
Ten five, okay.
What I'm proposing is to take it from ten thousand five hundred down to a thousand.
Okay.
So that would be a ninety-five hundred dollar cut. If we did it, that's that's the arithmetic, if we did it.
So you're putting a thou- you're moving a thousand in town, count the line, town, count the line.
Right, yes.
I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding so that.
Yes.
So did I have to leave one dollar in there?
Yes.
So there are four votes for that? We can just do it casually now and take a moment.
Yes, for me.
Depends on what you love.
Yeah, yeah.
If you put a bunch of stuff in there, some people may disagree with you.
Yeah, and it it might fall off, you don't have to vote for, it's not a package deal, but um.
So do you have to make a motion for that, or can we just?
I I think I'm gonna postpone until we we. Yeah.
Why don't you go through what you're thinking and then we'll take it from there, I don't know if I vote on it all as one? Can we do that?
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's doing.
Okay.
So, so.
What was the second?
We may have to offend people in the room, probably will, um. What about the planning and zoning budget? If there's not an appetite to cut it.
Ben Chair, can I ask a question?
You bet.
Um is the new historical district uh analysis, all the stuff that's going on there, is it also gonna increase the Z E O's time?
Well, it's due.
Already done the bulk of it, so it would only be minimal.
Okay.
Amount, so.
Yeah, this this might help me focus on this number, thirty thousand. Is their billing rate about a hundred dollars an hour?
Ninety dollars, no.
So just to make the arithmetic easy, it's actually a little bit more, that that's three hundred hours of work a year. Do you really think you need three hundred hours of overtime?
I believe so, or I I'm gonna put that in the report. Bottom line, and and you have experience on that dimension as well, you know, the applications coming. I can tell you the difference now that the. Speaking of Z ones, we're long gone. What are the actual? Sorry, what are the actuals on that?
Um I don't know, somebody have that with with a.
Planning and zo- zoning, um I only have it through March. Sixteen eight has been spent of the twenty-seven three.
So all their bills in?
What? No, no. But I mean, we have three more months.
Just gotta get a sense of things.
Right. So I think. So it looks like you're gonna come under budget this year.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
I don't have a number to tell, man, y'all that were running pretty on target.
Yeah.
Close to that number scale, and I just wanted to say that the twenty-five percent U P C we're looking for. Remember, you've got that line item by by half last year, so we're only asking for a little bit back, so we're still under budget on twenty. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget, so if you can go all the way back to those numbers. And we're still under that budget if you combine the lines, because we're only asking, you you cut us by ten thousand. Uh for our twenty-four, twenty-five budget and. We're asking for part of that money back because we're actually using our planner for other. Other things in our town besides P N Z.
And and.
You got, you got just about all of it back.
And let it be known that, you know, there's more work that we can always do, we're very conscious of. That line, I know.
It's an important.
It will be continual, but that work never go on the way.
Right.
Always gonna be in a back burner and they'll never be advanced, it's just saying that.
So what people think?
So the estimated expenditures are twenty-seven thousand and they're proposing uh thirty-five five.
Mm-hmm.
But they've underspent the last couple of years, is that what I heard from Stephen, I I'm. They've never spent that entire budget for the last three uh fiscal years, is that what I was hearing?
You guys talking about the Z E O planner line and the whole.
The whole department.
Whole thing, okay, I just wanna make sure.
No, they. You had a budget of thirty-seven, seven in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah.
And this went down to twenty-seven.
Yeah, so Carol, in twenty-three.
The thirty-four was still under our budget from twenty-two, twenty-three and thirty-seven.
You're just about all the way back, it's thirty-seven, seven and thirty-five, six, so you're just about all.
But the actuals.
They haven't spent that money, correct?
Uh but uh so Carol, you were asking, they had in twenty, in the previous fiscal year, they spent thirty-seven, seven.
I thought he said he came on, they came under that they didn't, I'm, that's why I'm asking, I thought, I thought I heard him say that they didn't spend that money.
And you expect.
We don't do things because we've spent.
And you and you expect to do that this year?
Yeah, we hope we can, depending on how many hours we can meet during our own meeting. Sometimes we have to table stuff because we actually can't get to it in the two and a half hours or three hours.
Not detecting a ground swell of enthusiasm or cuts here, am I reading the 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 table right?
Reading the audience.
Not not.
I'm reading you right.
Not not for me, but uh maybe other people are 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 open to it.
I'd like to see if we can meet in the middle somehow and take a little bit off the top and meet in the middle. We've gotta start making some cuts, so we're gonna, we keep kicking this can down the road, we just can't keep doing it, that's my feeling, I said that at the last meeting. It's not, it's not anti-planning and zoning, it's not anti-education, it's not anti-fire company, it, the bottom line is you only have so much money to work with. And you can't just keep kicking this can down the road, we just can't do it.
Yeah, let's look at the next item uh that you had in mind, John.
Well, let's let's try to wrap this up, cause I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna be here forever, we're gonna have decisions.
So what's the question right now?
I think the question that um Carol raised, I think Carl was squinting in a way that was sympathetic. Is that um we take something off their budget, but not a whole lot, so. The planner line, including the um. The consultant engineer planner line together with the Z E O planner line adds up to thirty thousand one sixty. The same thing last year was exactly six thousand dollars left, we could cut the loaf in half.
Three thousand?
Yeah.
I'll go with that, every little bit's gonna help and it's gonna show some good faith on the part of everybody to the taxpayers.
Do you know, I phone Jake, it's Jake Peterson, there's a weird name on Zoom and.
I phone Jake. Maybe some more excitement.
Oh, please, no.
So let's, so P N Z, you're you're asking around the table of how people feel about uh lessons without. So she's okay about it. Carol, sounds like she's okay about it.
I am too.
Yeah, then my, then my my spot doesn't really matter.
Okay, and I'm I'm not, so it doesn't matter to me, I mean, it does matter.
I I don't think we touched that, the P N Z, I think there is a lot of work coming, especially if we do get some of these projects.
Yep.
We're gonna need that work, but.
And we need planning.
But.
We need, if we're gonna be, if we're gonna change the way we work. Yeah, but if we're gonna change the way we work, we need P N Z.
I mean, if these planning projects come through and if there are gonna be development or something, that would generate revenue. So we could revisit that another year.
And, you know, we can do supplemental appropriations as well. Would never said no to a request for more money.
So do I have this written down, right, to reduce the Z E O planner line by three thousand dollars?
Yes, that's, yes.
Just.
Was just drafting.
This is all.
My comment is, my last comment will be on this, we'll be moved on, John, sorry, is that if we are going to ask organizations to figure out revenue. P O C D is a big piece of that, so they're gonna need more work, more time.
I'm guessing that nobody would be excited about not making the. Contributions to the reserves for Kellogg in light of what Pat said.
Right.
I think that's. At least for the roof.
Yeah, what we're giving. Well, the plan is fifteen thousand five hundred for one, forget what it was, for the reserves. Eighty-five hundred for technology and um.
That has thirty-two thousand in it now.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
No, it's new as of twenty-four, twenty-five, the technology one.
The reserve power for technology is is twenty, between twenty and thirty.
Yes.
And we may have to cut them. Given the cuts that you've required us uh to make.
I, as far as capital reserves. I I don't think we can literally catch up from what we did last year, all in this year, is all I'm saying, and so. That's, that is one part that I I would.
So where does that lead you to?
That leads me to suggest some different amounts for this year for um some of these other accounts.
Well, let's, can we stay with Kellogg for a minute, we'll see.
Oh, okay.
So there's two reserves. Whereas the the proposal is to put eighty-five hundred into the technology reserve. Um seventeen into the capital building reserve. Which sounds like there's.
Actually, I I wouldn't touch it too much, maybe, maybe a thousand dollars. Uh on the on the tech, that's the only place I I would go from, if you're working from the bottom up, I would take maybe. Thousand dollars off of the of the capital technologies.
I think you feel like about that.
Make sure I understand.
I mean, I'm gonna try to come up with a lot more than just a thousand dollars from this. Bank of recurring capital.
So make sure I understand this correctly, there are, there's already money put away for technology for Kellogg. That they have in reserves. I would, I would not touch the building. But is the money that you currently have in reserves enough for any foreseeable technology changes this year?
Well, we we cut the technology because we have the reserve, okay? Uh and we would, we'll try very hard to keep within the budget that we put in each of the technology lines. But it may very well be that um we will not be able to do that, we'll come to you for a a a request for. Who knows, X number of dollars, obviously it'll have to be under whatever he he thinks in reserve now. I've seen times we set up many, many years ago. And they were done to try and get money made, so but when something came up. We already had the money, the talent knew, this is both on the town side and on the Board of Education side. The town needs to know, being fiscal and responsible, and looking to the future to make sure. That we at least would pray part of the cost of a larger project.
So of the ten thousand that you did trim, how much of that came out of the technology budget? So of the ten thousand that you did trim, how much of that came out of the technology budget?
Uh quite a bit, or thirty five hundred came out of one line. Uh we, we did get, uh the other thing I didn't mention, and I think this is true for the board of selectmen too, from what they said. Any opportunity there is to apply for grants, we apply for grants. So sometimes we get those grants. And this year, we didn't find out until. End of this week that we got. For last week, that we did get something with the technology. So that's why we took it out of technology because we got, we got a grant. Obviously, technology is gonna be a very important, a very important thing for education.
Pat, you may have answered this, but what, what's, do you know the sum, somebody in the table know the sum in the reserve right now, the techni?
Technology, it's only eighty nine. No, 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 the. Only in the current.
In the current reserve.
It's a new account.
Which reserve are we talking?
Technology.
The, the technology reserve that the town set up for.
From thirty thousand.
It's about thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's thirty two. At the end of March.
I'm just saying, trim a thousand dollars out of it. I'm just suggesting to trim a thousand dollars out of the eighty five hundred. I mean, that's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that unless you're looking at trimming some other things. You know, in the, in this capital, in the non-recurring capital accounts. A thousand dollars is, is not, is not going to change our, our bottom line much. But if you look at the capital reserves accounts. As a whole and look at some of them. I just don't think we can catch up from the drastic cuts we made last year all in one year. So when you go from thirty six to sixty, it just, I know you wanna catch up, but it's just not. We just can't do that in one year.
Are we trying to get to the forty?
We're not gonna get there.
No, so no one wants to talk about any other capital reserve cuts.
I'll, I'll talk about them. Um, wha- what are your thoughts?
Um, I started out with the um heavy equipment one. Not being thirty five, but being. Um. Two, twenty. Uh huh. And I, and I had said the truck reserve instead of being sixty would be forty five. And it's not ideal, but I mean.
Could say that one again.
The last one?
Yeah.
Truck reserve instead of being proposed at sixty thousand dollars into the reserves. That we would, they, we would put forty five.
Okay.
And what was the other reserve? The, the equipment reserve?
Heavy equipment instead of doing thirty five, we would do twenty. You know, I, I mean, I'd love to do all of these. I really would. Uh but if. Yeah, uh but I do wanna catch up somewhat. I just can't catch up a hundred percent. With the damage that was done last year. You know, and then there are some other areas, you know, maybe. Um. Maybe.
I just wanted to make sure we're on top of the arithmetic. Now, if we, if we took fifteen thousand dollars. Out of each of those two reserves.
Right.
That's a steeper cut than we imposed last year. Last year, we did fifteen percent cuts. That's a one-third cut. So we know the arithmetic. Thirty thousand dollars between two accounts that are asking for ninety five and we're saying, no, drop it to sixty five. Those are duper cuts than we made.
We, they had in twenty three, twenty three, twenty four. I'm, if I'm not understanding this, please correct me. In twenty three, twenty four, year before last, be, before the current one.
Right.
They put ten thousand dollars in.
Right.
And we had them make a fifteen percent cut. So they, we put in fifty eighty five hundred. Now you want to put in thirty five thousand compared to the ten thousand.
Right.
And I'm saying.
No.
I'm not saying.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay.
I'm not just saying.
You don't see.
Take the proposal.
Yeah, I don't look at it comparing it like you're doing. I'm looking at it as, you know, we, we made them cut fifteen thousand dollars. I mean, for fifteen hundred dollars in the last year's budget.
Right.
Right. And I'm saying, let, we're not gonna go all the way back to ten thousand dollars. But we're not gonna go all the way up to thirty five. So let's go to twenty.
Where, where did those? Proposals come from? Why are those, those are significant?
Those are significant. I will agree with you. They are significant, but. We looked at how much money we had in the fund and trying to catch up, so trying to meet our needs.
I'm just saying we can't catch up that much that fast. I, I, I applaud you and I think that's great. I just, I wish we could catch up that much that fast. Um, we, we can do better than we did last year. We can do better even than we did the year before. But we can't do as, as good as you would like us to do. We can't do thirty five and we won't go down to ten, but maybe we can do twenty.
But I mean, we will never.
But.
I know, but we're, we're never gonna catch up.
But we can't take that attitude right here about never catching up because it's not about completely catching up. We've. We've done our best. And we know that none of these reserve accounts are gonna buy what we need. They are going to put a down payment on a, on something so that we can borrow. And I believe in getting those reserves help me, but I, we can't, we, you know. It's, I, I can't, the miracle girl will only go so far. I mean, I, I mean, unless you wanna approve the, the, you know, it's all of the capital reserves, I, that's fine too. But I, I. So, there you go.
What's, what's the feeling around the table about that? Taking fifteen thousand.
I think it's fair.
I agree with Amy.
I'd wanna, I wouldn't do fifteen, I guess, if I could, I'd go shorter than that. I'd maybe do ten. I don't think I, I don't think I could take fifteen. I mean, I understand.
Tell, tell me what.
Because I do believe, I know how expensive this equipment is. I do believe we do. It is good to have a reserve there. For one like that.
Knowing that we may have to borrow anyway.
Well, anyway.
That's, that's a given.
Well, but it's also gonna help where we're trying to go right now. But I agree with Tom. We're, we're gonna be doing this for the.
And we also have a lot of projects coming in with borrowing. Soon we're gonna have a substantial debt.
Yeah. We're gonna go from a wreck.
So what about taking ten away from each? Not fifteen, but ten?
It's great.
That I can, that I can. I mean, it's, it's not ideal, but it's.
I actually, I, I actually, I, I agree with Amy with the fifteen because down, you know, we're not looking to. Purchase a truck next year. It may be three years from now, four years from now. And we'll be in a better position hopefully to add to those reserves plus our borrowing power. You don't know what interest rates are gonna be. I just really feel. That it's not too much. So I'm, I'm, I'm for the fifteen.
It makes.
Before, so I, but I am for the fifteen.
To me, it makes no difference. Five thousand is not gonna change a lot, but don't.
Uh Jim, I, I'm sorry. I didn't see you back there. I, you changed seats to you.
That plan, um, this plow truck with a plow and a sander is about three hundred thousand dollars. Uh this town runs a plow truck for minimum twenty five years. Uh sometimes thirty, depending on when I can get some more money to buy another one. So I have five trucks. Every five years, we try to replace one. The one that gets uh replaced, sometimes if it's in good enough shape, we keep it for a couple more years, use it for a spare. Uh if one goes down in a snowstorm, they got something else to jump into and finish plowing the room. Um. That heavy equipment budget. That, that replaces, that would replace the backhoe, the loader, fuel grader, um. Uh a sweeper. Some of that stuff, a, a, a backhoe, twenty fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, ours is twenty five years old. How long can I run it? If I still was able to buy parts for it this year. Uh I guess we can get another year out of it. What am I gonna do when I uh place it?
Right. So it's thirty thousand in the reserve right now. And they want to add an uh, uh heavy equipment, another thirty five.
That, that's, we can also, we can replace it in five years.
Right.
But either way, we're still gonna be borrowing money so that over that period of time that we borrow the money, that difference isn't gonna be that great. Um, so that I think that, again, I go with Amy. I think we can do the fifteen. And put it back in increments and get to that point. I know it's, it's a hard pill to swallow, but what we have to understand. Is that there are people in this town who can't afford that, even that slight increase. And our obligation is to everybody, not just the people in the room. Not just the committees, but to the other people that are paying taxes. And I think it's very important. That we show them that we are trying very hard to keep their, their numbers down. We can't get young people in this town because of the taxes. We can't get people to buy houses here because of what the, the mill rate is with their income to debt ratio. It kills them. I talked to banks the other day. They can't even qualify for people to buy a house in Falls Village, young people. So these are the things that we all have to look at. It's not just about whether or not, right now, we need that money. We need to put that money there. We are a good town. We'll be able to foot the bill for this if we have to. Two years down the road, get a loan, we'll be able to do that. But right now, things are tough for people. And I think uh another five thousand dollars isn't going to hurt the town. But it could hurt the taxpayers. And if it can take the load off of those people as far as the mill rate goes, and hopefully get some young people to be able to afford to live here. I'm all for, you know, cutting it uh to the fifteen thousand. I've been outvoted before and I'll go along with whatever they wanna do, but. Um, I feel very strongly about that.
Yeah.
What they said ten? Ten, ten.
Sorry.
What, you, you have a five-year plan, um, uh roughly, what year are we in of that five-year plan?
Oh, that was to start.
Okay, great. Okay, so my other question is.
The amount we were doing before, but it kept getting cut.
Right.
So you have to like start over.
Yeah, so if we're in, this was the first year of the, of that five-year plan.
Yes.
So are you thinking that uh your, your banking, that five-year plan is based on this amount? Roughly every year for five years, right? Or for next four years, this year and two more others, right? Okay, so you have to keep that in mind too. So their plan is that you're gonna get thirty five thousand into that account. This year, next year, the year after.
And that's already changing our five-year plan to that will actually be an eight-year.
Right.
We bought the last truck.
Yeah.
Tim, did you say before, like the last few trucks, you'd have to, we have to borrow them through data reserve?
That's correct.
Right, so this'll be the first time we would have to actually borrow.
For the truck and, and paid for it.
Yeah.
Um.
But who knows? You may need two uh heavy.
I think actually we had a loan. We had, we had a loan for a, for a loader. That was two thousand three.
And, and if, if I remember perfectly, the steep grant does include, if we get the steep. There is equipment in there.
There's the two trucks that we don't have in any budget.
Okay.
Uh the pickup truck and the small dump truck.
Yeah.
Not in it.
So, they're not, they're not even figured in.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so how about a compromise? Um, instead of cutting thirty. You suggested cutting twenty. Some people wanna cut more. I don't know how we distribute the cuts between the two, but between the two, a twenty five. Can you do that?
That's twelve five a piece.
Five and.
Well, twenty five in total. I don't know.
Yeah, how you cut it, I don't care, but um just taking that amount of money off, I think is, is critical.
Be good on that.
I can handle that.
All right, so let's just pencil that in. Twenty five thousand dollars.
Somewhere in the resource.
Well.
Those two lines.
Um, let's ask people who know. Um. Which one would you, could you tolerate a deeper cut than the other? The, the uh.
The heavy machinery.
If we have to cut twenty five.
Between the two.
Between the two, how would you do it?
Would you just divide it down the middle?
I, I'd probably take it out of the truck.
The, the most of it out of the truck, not all of it.
And we're so far behind on the heavy equipment. I, I can't.
So how, how about we say twenty out of the.
We're only three years behind on the milk though.
Right, how about twenty out of the truck reserve, five out of the equipment reserve. Total of twenty five. Most of it's coming out of the, of the truck reserve.
Uh huh.
I'm sure you'd rather have none, but. Um, well.
Borrowed on another day.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Uh so keeping score.
Area savings and so.
Keeping.
Borrowing for Peter to pay off.
Well, you're.
Yeah.
Borrowing, yeah, you're pay, you're paying interest.
So let me just do a little quick arithmetic. If you, if you take the cuts, the selectmen agreed to. And eliminate the um. Yeah, you take the cuts that they agreed to. That was ten, six, eighty five.
Mm hmm.
Uh huh.
And that included two thousand dollars, um, just play along. So I'm sure I'm doing this right. There was twelve thousand five hundred in total legal expenses in the initial proposals for. Selectman's line, litigation expense line, P and Z line, twelve thousand five hundred. That's already been cut to ten thousand five hundred. So we can cut. Another ninety five hundred, which will leave the selectman with a thousand. And the other accounts would be one dollar. So, um, so ten, six, eighty five. And then you add to that, it would be um nine thousand five hundred for legal expenses. Three, what was it, three?
Yes, three per planner.
Uh, yes.
That's what you said.
Right, um, so that's twelve thousand five hundred, a thousand out of the Kellogg technical reserve, thirteen thousand five hundred. Twenty five hundred out of the reserves we just talked about. So that's thirty eight thousand five hundred added to the. Ten that was already agreed to. So that is. We are very close. That's forty nine thousand one hundred eighty five dollars. Uh.
I'm just, I, I, I'm not comfortable with all of that. So I don't know how you want to.
What, what, tell, tell me what you're uncomfortable with.
I am not comfortable with, with the P and Z cut.
Okay.
Um, that's the one I'm least comfortable with. But if everybody else is, you know, when I'm in the minority.
Why don't we do these one at a time?
Well, it's not even that, but if they come to us for money, we have the, we can always, you know, they can come to us and say we need more money, which we've always done in the past, as long as they follow the procedure, we're good. We have a cushion there to do that.
So the issue for us is, do you wanna do these one at a time or do you wanna do them?
I, I'd have to do them later.
Okay, so I move.
That, can you step back one step? Cause I missed a step, step and sneeze in. You gotta lower the tap. And this is from the revised budget was made from, right?
Maybe.
Yes.
So lower the town council fees by three thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars.
No, this is the three hundred ninety.
Town, three thousand nine hundred ninety nine.
Well, when, when we intended to leave a thousand dollars in the legal expense.
I'm having to go down four thousand. I'm sorry. Litigation to lower by two thousand.
That one, that one we're good, we're good on five, right? Cause the proposal was six.
No, we're, we're working off of this. Oh, I see. The new one I got then.
I, I think the only thing they shaved was the litigation expense, right, Dave?
Right.
Okay, so they started with six. And we would cut five off of that line.
Right.
Okay, so the motions are, are gonna be based on the revised.
May ten.
May, may ten.
Okay, so we cut five off of the legal expense line.
Right.
Isn't that still?
Still, it's.
Yeah, why, why is that, Dave? Did you cut a thousand?
He already took out, they already took ten, six, eighty five.
No, he took, no, no, he took a thousand dollars off of legal base. They lowered, lowered it from six to five.
Okay, but I thought you said, Dave, you took it all out of the litigation expense line.
When the next.
The next day.
I know, but did you?
You took it out of.
Did you take a thousand dollars out of the general legal expense line?
The general legal expense line? Um. No, we actually uh.
No, but I.
No, we took it out of the other page.
Thousand dollars out, yeah, five thousand.
So you took a thousand out of that?
Right.
Dollars out of town.
Correct.
Okay, so.
And now you're taking.
Four thousand.
Four, four thousand. With a thousand, one thousand.
I thought you took it out, where do they take it? The litigation or the?
That, the litigation was.
Well, we're in legal expenses now.
So, so.
Twenty four ninety nine.
The, the motion would be to take four thousand out of the legal expense. The, the motion would be to take four thousand out of the legal expense line. And except for a dollar, to take. All the remaining, um, litigation expense, which was, that was forty-five hundred?
Right. Twenty-five hundred.
You're gonna take two thousand four hundred ninety-nine out.
Yeah, right, right. Um, and then we take nineteen ninety-nine out of the P and Z legal line.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
So what's that all add up to?
Two dollars shy of.
One.
The what?
Four, five, six, seven. Why can't I do this?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Fifty-five, eighty-five.
Ninety-four, ninety-eight.
No, four thousand twenty-four ninety-nine and nineteen ninety-nine, that's all we're doing right now, right? Legal, pretty, yeah, three lines.
Nineteen ninety-nine twice and four thousand.
No, four thousand twenty-four ninety-nine and nineteen ninety-nine. Eight-four.
Twenty-four ninety-nine, sorry, right.
What is it, nine-four, ninety?
Eight-four ninety.
So it's a total cut of eighty-five hundred dollars.
Is that, you can do motion? So we're gonna do the motion, please.
I moved it, we reduce, I don't have the line numbers in front, guess I did. Um, well, then, that's, we can, you can fill that in. I moved that we, we cut from the revised budget, an additional four thousand from the selectmen's legal expense line. An additional twenty-four ninety-nine from the litigation expense line. And.
Okay, so you're gonna leave some into litigation, I thought you were gonna take that out.
One.
One dollar.
They, they had already cut that, Carol, let's finish.
Oh, they did, okay.
Okay, so, so the motion from the top, four thousand off the selectmen's legal expense line, twenty-four ninety-nine. Off the litigation expense line for the selectmen, and nineteen ninety-nine off the P and Z legal expense lines. For a total reduction of eighty-four ninety-eight. So that's my motion.
I second. Is there other discussion?
God, I hope you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? So one, we gotta do roll call. Nick, Earl.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Ginger, aye.
Okay, next motion, hmm, to, um. Cut three thousand dollars. From the planning and zoning permissions, um. Looking for it. So in the planning and zoning permissions, um, Z E O planner line.
Uh, you're making the motion, I'll second it. A second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amy?
Nick.
Carl?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Aye.
Second last motion is to cut one thousand dollars from the. Contribution by the town to the Kellogg's Technology Reserve Account.
Seconded. So rediscussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Last one. Biggest of them all. Um, motion, I moved to cut. Twenty thousand dollars. From the town's contribution. To. The truck reserve account. Uh, which would reduce that down to forty-five thousand, excuse me, down to forty thousand. So a twenty thousand dollar cut in that, and a five thousand dollar cut. In the town's contribution to the equipment, heavy equipment reserve capital account, reducing that contribution. Down to thirty.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Oh.
Sure said, we need rule call.
Amy? Aye. Carl?
Aye.
Tom?
Nay.
John?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Aye.
So what's the total?
We just cut, in addition to the ten-six-eighty-five, that the selectman had previously cut. I think we cut another thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight thousand five hundred, somewhere in there, yeah.
So.
Thirty-eight thousand four ninety-eight.
What is it?
So what's our, um, total municipal?
What's it, forty-eight, one eighty-five, what is it?
Forty-seven, four ninety-eight, they just cut, we had already previously done. Ten, but.
So the municipal budget in total. See if this is right. Is coming down in total, um, are we working off the revised budget?
Yes.
Okay, so it's coming down thirty-eight thousand four ninety-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Yeah. Thirty-seven, four ninety-eight.
Okay.
So what does that mean? It's a.
Then leaves us.
Bottom line.
Close to a fifty thousand dollar cut.
Right, I just wonder what, what does the twenty-two, two, two million two hundred ninety-four thousand turn into?
Which turns into. Two million, two fifty-six, five twenty-six.
Six, okay, um, so. She, uh, should we make a motion to send that to, uh, town hearings?
No, that's about, you're not including the debt service in that number.
Oh, okay, oh.
Better.
Right, right, right.
So what would the, the mill increase be? For that?
Yeah, we, it depends on some, some other things that we haven't decided yet.
And we don't, yeah, we don't want to talk about that too early, there's more information.
Alright, so the updated proposed, including the debt service. Is two million four hundred and twenty-one thousand eight twenty-six.
Thank you. So that's what we're, um, recommending to town hearing, right? Yes.
Well, yes, we're going to the town hearing, not, it wouldn't be the meeting.
Town hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah, public, public hearing. And then the Board of Education budget as presented today.
Yes.
As revised.
So that's a motion, making the motion.
Second.
Yeah.
Recommend to public hearing, public hearing.
Uh, the Board of Education budget as presented today.
No.
No, the tax. No, Board of Education, I'm sorry. Okay, that's sorry, that was an easy one, I was going there first. And then, then as you were saying, um, then the Crown of Canaan Municipal Food spending plan.
Less as low.
Um, with the, with the, uh, cuts that were discussed, with a total government budget of two million four hundred and twenty-one thousand eight twenty-six.
Okay, all we, all you put in the motion, send a public hearing is the number.
Okay.
For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Two million four hundred and twenty-one thousand eight.
You're gonna include the board, right?
No, no, separate, separate.
So for the municipal.
So that's the motion.
Recommend to public hearing.
Got it. And we'll get some more feedback.
Carl's seconding.
Are, are we sure of the arithmetic? Just wanna make sure we did, we repeated it right.
This is the budget that. The modified, modified budget is two, four, five, nine, three, two, four.
And from that tonight.
So thirty-seven, four, four, three, four ninety-eight, four ninety-eight.
Okay, so let's just make sure that that's the right number, thirty-seven, four ninety-eight. I'm gonna call it thirty-seven thousand, uh, five hundred, just for the sake of. Not killing ourselves, so we, we took, um. How much out of, how much are the three legal expense lines?
Eighty-four ninety-eight, or if you wanted to do eighty-five.
Eighty, eighty-five hundred.
And then we did twenty-six thousand from the reserves.
Right.
And three thousand from CEO.
Three, three from CEO.
So that's twenty-nine thousand, plus the eighty-four ninety-eight, thirty-seven thousand four ninety-eight.
That's right.
Okay, we are on the table, motion on the table. To send to public hearing, recommend to public hearing.
Was a second?
Yeah, second for her. That's in discussion. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need a date for the public hearing?
Yes. Joanna will do the notice with it as soon as we can do it.
Uh, but, but, but we can get the notice out tomorrow, which means it won't appear till Wednesday, everyone have their calendar out.
Yeah, what's today, the twelfth?
Yes.
So it won't get out until the fourteenth. As, uh, calendar minute out fifteenth.
Is it calendar days?
Yes.
That one weekday weekend or not?
Yeah. It really doesn't matter, can you?
What, as soon as we can have a, uh, five-day hearing.
The thirtieth?
Days from today or for the? Calendar days or five weekdays?
Calendar days. Well, less than five.
So we could have it on the nine, well, five calendar days is the nineteenth.
No.
No, 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 no.
Damn, and the twentieth.
Okay, twentieth.
What day of the week is the twentieth?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twentieth. I see, we, because in, uh, Wednesday.
Be safe, you could do it on the twenty-first.
We need as many days as possible, but. But it.
Um, what I would.
The question is, actually, the next question is, we need. Two weeks between a hearing and a town meeting, right? Move that signal, so, um, that would.
We're gonna push Rebecca to the limit.
Yeah, well, she said by the seventh, if we get it, if we meet on the fourth, it'll be two weeks.
So when is the town meeting?
Well, or the sixth. Um, yeah.
So let's pick a date for the hearing.
Hearing and the town.
The hearing would be on the twenty-first or the?
Twentieth or the twenty-first.
Well, you can back up, cause you can have two weeks, so if you're gonna have the pop, if you're gonna have the town meeting on the sixth, you can actually have the public hearing.
Well, the twenty-third is, but that's Memorial Day weekend, you're not gonna get.
Yeah, I would, let's do the twenty-first, uh, when, how is that?
I'm just gonna look, I'm looking over at Michelle. Actually, I'm looking over at Hazel and Michelle and.
The twenty-first would be fine at the firehouse.
Do we, do we have the hearing here?
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't do it, you know, it's a fair, you don't want to do it.
So, let's do, let's go with the.
Alright, so go with me.
Is that in person only, or can there be people participating via Zoom on a hearing?
It's done both ways, so, yeah, boy, that kept, that kept, that, that.
What's that?
That in person, it definitely kept Denise very busy last time.
I know, but I think it's important that everybody have inputs up for the hearing.
I mean, Denise, Denise coordinated that a lot last time.
So the hearing's gonna be May twenty-one?
Yeah.
At what time, we zoom?
On May twenty-one.
May twenty-one?
Yeah, once.
Yes.
Yes.
What time? Six P M?
Six.
Sorry, Carol.
Does that work for you?
Then, I'll make it work.
Six thirty?
At the emergency services center, right?
One eighty-eight, group seven south.
And what about the, uh, the town meeting?
Let's schedule that too. Um, do you wanna, um, we, we like to try to make it so that we can get participation from as many people as possible. And so I know lots, lots of people had thought, you know, early on a Friday evening. But I'm open to suggestion, like the sixth. That is the last day that Rebecca would want us to do that, if she had her druthers.
Rather not, that's my birthday, but I'll, I'll show up.
Yeah, I understand.
It's the big seven oh, so.
Oh, well, then, we'll have a party afterwards.
Everybody will be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, you could also do it on, on the.
That's, that's okay.
I don't know what the fifth is like for, okay, well, that's right, it's Thursday. So, so it's the. It's the fourth or the sixth.
Yeah, I was saying, it's gotta be their Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. So the second.
June sixth.
So Friday.
I think it should be at seven o'clock, give people time to get here from the city.
It means nobody's being.
When, that's true, I mean.
June sixth, I'm away.
What?
As long as Dave's okay, that's six, it's fine.
Yeah, I can open it up.
So what time you wanna do that?
I would say. I still split the difference for six-thirty.
Well, I think you, six-thirty, if you have people coming from the, from the city or something, uh, the seven o'clock is, is probably better. I, I, that's just my opinion based on, you know, experience, but, um.
I'm just thinking, if they, if they want to be at the town meeting, they'll probably leave a little early then, from the city. Okay.
So that's.
So I'm ma- making a motion for those two meetings to be scheduled. Okay, so that we, we ask that the selectmen, uh, schedule those meetings, yeah. That's all I guess.
Yeah, it's like.
We have to make a motion for that.
So you're doing the, uh, oh, go ahead.
So then we eat, the mo- the, the only one we schedule is the special meeting following.
No, schedule a public hearing, public hearing, and then you have a special meeting after the town.
Right.
Right.
So we're just making a motion to schedule the town hearing. On the twenty-first, at six-thirty, at the firehouse. And then we, then, uh, uh, can we do it as one motion?
Yes.
Um, and then to schedule a special meeting following. The town meeting on Friday, June sixth. At whatever time.
Immediately following.
Immediately following the six-thirty meeting.
The six-thirty time, which is to, one, set the mill rate.
Set the mill rate.
And. Decide the.
Any allocation.
The general.
Yeah.
Dave, I need the, um. When you send into the paper, the, uh, public hearing? Uh, I need that, whatever you write, cause it's gotta match the agenda, so can you have that sent over to me?
Wait, and if you would give me the exact numbers for everything.
Let me get, let me get Amy's second.
Yes, I apologize.
Thank you.
Anyone wanna send it out?
He's got it.
Oh, great.
Alright, um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carol?
Carol?
Hi, hi.
Hi, yes, okay. So now, we've got the clarification of what we need.
The exact numbers, uh, Madam Secretary? Okay.
They're here somewhere, yeah.
Okay. So we can add those correctly, put it.
Alright, so let's finish this agenda.
Okay. Okay. There's more? Items, I don't have any um new business, we had a micro grant corporation. That we need to put through.
Have that. Put in the line. Another five thousand.
We don't know what we, uh, I, I'd love to make that motion, but I don't know the numbers.
She does.
Or into the micro grant.
Uh, okay. So I'll take the motions.
I don't. It's the micro grant or the within the.
Right.
Okay, I'm making a motion. To increase the micro grant line. Under the one oh oh one selectmen's expenses from five thousand dollars. To ten thousand dollars. And. Uh, and I'm also with that same motion, making uh, to, to have the expense line increased. For that item by five thousand dollars. The expense and the revenue. Can I have that? Yes. Do you do that? So then.
I'll say that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All of them favor? I agree. Opposed? Carol, were you in agreement?
Yes, I said aye.
Okay, thank you.
And then.
Be posted that.
Um. And last, I had. Was what we added, which was the board of selectmen's. And your answer is in? Yes. That was that the board of selectmen recommends that we utilize the twenty six K towards the capital reserve. Of the ambulance from, but it'll be via town meeting.
Right.
Uh, so what's his, what's the motion? Sorry.
Let's go to the town meeting or hearing.
Yeah, um, this will be a, this will be a town meeting, yeah, because we've received the money. Cause it has to go in the general fund. That we've received the money. So we're, the board of selectmen has recommended. To utilize the twenty seven K towards the capital reserve of the ambulance. But it will be via town meeting.
Right, and we can actually include, include that on the agenda. For the town meeting, much as we will the P and Z trailer. Oh, or that's, or not.
I agree, uh, so moved, I mean. So moved.
Second that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Just one question, I wasn't here at the selectmen's meeting, what was the competing? Idea? If we don't put into the ambulance reserve, where would it go, it's in general fund or?
It would just go in the general fund.
It was in the general fund, yeah.
Okay, good. But it was brought up by one of our other selecting that, uh. Just can solve, brought up that it might be used for other things, for projects, so on and so forth, so. But.
You're recommending.
But we voted to recommend that go to the ambulance, which is voted.
Okay.
So if we're in agreement with that. Well, either way, we can vote and we can. We're agree or disagree. Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Here.
Hi.
Carol?
Hi.
Any other business? And then I know. So.
Do, I, I do have two issues, um, I don't know, maybe it's, we, let's see, show. How many dollars? Does it take to, to, uh, maybe?
So.
Roughly two hundred and forty three thousand dollars.
That's what the new grant.
Yeah.
Forty three thousand? Four hundred and forty three thousand. And the, the other thing I want to say, um. Involves putting in zone. Um. I think any, cutting the attorney fees of the planning zone is not the right move, I hope, right? But when we go to town meeting or town hearing, you will spend that. Uh, I said that the spending is only for sixteen years. And it is one of the most difficult issues to, to serve on, to make sure you're getting it right. So this, the town, right, so. Uh, I would be, you know, just myself personally, but I mean, I, I would listen to him and, and not take. And not take that, all that money out of the attorney fees.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Everyone.
Right. Score, score, seventy. I, I really appreciate the work that you do, it's, it's uh, to take this job with all of our committees, commissions, departments. And there's tough choices, it's not personal. Um, but you know, sometimes I think we have to be careful to get a little bit. So it's maybe. And the better is like, if the company did share the, that sidebar is, when we don't pay for things today, we can, we can fold down. So the structure that they're talking about, these six bridges is because. Unfortunately, we've never been in position to do them before financially. But I can guarantee you from my professional career that we're gonna end up paying a whole lot more, I mean, having to deal with it along the way. And the same could be happen with our, our client consultant, the same could be happen, definitely with the heavy equipment. And we think of something about heavy equipment, I unfortunately, well, fortunately, I'm on it right under my career, because all the equipment that I need to buy professionally. We don't get twenty five years out of, we used to. I'm thankful if I'm get nine years out of a, a three hundred thousand dollars, you're being. Um, dollars, our million dollars. I think twelve hundred mark. I'm, I'm thanking somebody of a higher power than myself. So keep that in mind moving forward, that we're no longer, these days, the glory days of these years and these benefits of. The longevity of getting. So much out of that dollar, it's gone. It's just not available and it's not gonna last, I promise you. If that doesn't solve, doesn't make we get tonight's law by any stretch, it doesn't solve the town issues, but it's something moving forward into the next generation, the next years. We have to come up with something. Unfortunately, I don't have that answer pretty fine, but. Uh, definitely something to keep in mind is that these big ticket items are. So you know, they don't make them the way they used to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It, just, I just want, uh, go on what he said, what Brad said, I don't know anybody. Who has a more conservative budget and makes things last than Tim.
Absolutely.
I, I'm telling you, and if he says that he needs new equipment, he needs new equipment or a good used piece of equipment. So a- again, Tim, you know, I hope you will also. Bring, bring that up at, at the, at, at the hearing. And at the town meeting too. I, I think sometimes we tend to cut off our notes and slide our base, and I think you gotta be careful about that.
And I'll, I'll just, for, for a public comment, I'm just. Very um interested in, in getting more information in a sense of how, you know, people vocally wanna express their. What, what elements of the budget they are comfortable with and what they aren't, so we're gonna get more information um at the. At the town hearing, which is always helpful and always food for thought.
I have a question. I mean, that word, um. When you guys are trying to devise a capital plan. Um, it's always helpful to know when you need the money by, so you can stretch everything else, you're not paying for everything in one year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, is that gonna be, is like more money gonna be able to go to certain things because they're done sooner, or is it just, uh, uh. Everybody does the same thing across the board for the, for however it needs.
Answer quite quickly, and I think part of it is, is it needs, going to lay out a plan and give a perspective. Because right now, I have no perspective, I know what Tim's saying, but I can't, I have to see it, I'm one of these, it's a visual, I need to see it laid out. And I need to understand that, okay, in five years, we're gonna need this, and six years, we're gonna need this.
That's just one department.
And that, and see how it matches. And then, once you start laying everybody out. We're gonna have greater, we'll have a roadmap.
So what I'm hearing now is everything's gonna come due at the same time.
No.
There, there is no, I'm hearing now is there's no capital plan in place.
But I mean, no, there's no, the fire trucks do, the ambulances do, the. Presented when the fire.
They had a plan.
We have a plan and we presented our replacement plan.
But what it'll allow us to do is take our limited resources that we have and decide how much we put into each part of the capital plan. Based on the longevity of the equipment, based on. Uh, everything that we have in, in the non recurring capital funds, at least it. Gives us a little bit better, as Ginger said, perspective on it.
I also think that once you overlay all the department's needs in the plan, then you can ask those departments to shift so that you blend it and level it all off, so. And hopefully nothing changes during that capital plan in time, so.
What I mean is, is. The ambulance you need in two years, right? Yeah, as soon as we can get it, and, and we'll get it in sooner than two years, because.
They're, they have to make it.
Well, that's the top line that they're giving us. We haven't finished backing out our emails, yeah, once we order it, we haven't ordered it yet, we hope to order it by the end of the year. And once we do, then um, we're expecting, and just hoping it'll be two years. So you have to pay for it when you order it, we probably have to pay for it in moments.
Would you?
Right, but we are trying to. Secure the funds as soon, you know, as soon as we can, and as much as we can save, I mean, we were given a donation, how was it, two years ago? From um, someone who passed away from their state. And we said at that point, we know we're gonna need a new ambulance, we're gonna put that money aside. Cause that's money we don't have to go back to the taxpayers. Okay. Trying to save some money, we do, and June seven, we do have some revenue, but our revenue. And then the, we definitely do bill, but we are not bringing in enough. To actually have that really contribute. To a new ambulance based on the cost, the expenses of running the ambulance, it's, it's only, we only have slightly more revenue than we do expenses annually. So we can't really count on that as a revenue stream for us for replacing the ambulance at this time, so, and. You know, both the state and the federal government do not wanna increase Medicaid payments. So, and so if you don't increase Medicaid, then we can't increase our billing, cause the state, we have to, Medicare sets our rate. We don't have the ability to exceed the rate set by Medicare. So we're really limited in what we can bill. So it's really, our hands are tied, so we don't have the ability, like, we can't say, oh, well, we want to. Bill, you know, three thousand dollars for every ambulance call. Medicare sets the rate, the only thing that we can do is we bill based on mileage.